Good morning. The June 28, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We're going to have our statement board model read by Ms. Board Member King this morning.
Thank you. Good morning. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will always leave a legacy of success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board Clerk, please call the role.
Mrs. Addison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Present.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren DeBick, Director of Community Engagement, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in our place this morning.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Today, I'm proud to introduce two individuals who are part of the Bellevue High School Future Farmers of America, also known as FFA program. These students will be leading us in our inspiration and pledge this morning. Several Marion County Public Schools' FFA programs recently competed in individual, team, and overall program events at the 94th Annual Florida FFA Convention and Expo. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium District FFA President Kaylee Ayersman and Sub-District FFA Chairman Reagan Rowe.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kaylee Ayersman, and I am recently elected as the Florida FFA District 5 President.
And my name is Reagan Rowe, and I am serving as the Florida FFA District 5 Sub-District 1 Chairman.
We want to thank you for allowing us to be here today to share with you some information about our organization and to recognize our Marion County FFA members for their success at the 94th Florida FFA State Convention and Expo. So the National FFA Organization was established in 1928 and holds the title of being the largest youth organization in the nation. The FFA's mission is to make a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agriculture education. Our organization truly fights for the industry that feeds the world. We have, in Florida alone, we have over 26,000 FFA members and over 700,000 nationwide.
The Florida FFA State Convention and Expo was held every June to celebrate the yearly accomplishments of FFA members across the state of Florida. Roughly 5,000 members and guests attend every year and are provided opportunities to network, advocate, and grow as leaders and agriculturalists. Two weeks ago, over 100 Marion County students from 11 different middle and high schools had the opportunity to attend Florida FFA State Convention and be impacted. Every year, the top individuals from around the state are elected to serve as state officers, which is the highest officer position in our state association. We are proud to say that our very own Tyler Labe from the Lake Weir FFA chapter was named as the Florida FFA Area 3 State Vice President. Tyler will serve a one-year term, traveling the state and nation, working with students, promoting FFA, and advocating for agriculture.
The state FFA degree is the highest degree members can earn in the state association. We had 15 students from Marion County as recipients of this award. The highest honor within the National FFA Organization is the American FFA degree. Marion County had three recipients this year, and those students will be recognized at the national convention in October. While at convention, members came together to celebrate achievements won throughout this past school year for their efforts in competitions called Career and Leadership Development Events. These events can range anywhere from parliamentary procedure and employment skills to food science and technology and environmental science and natural resources. We had 28 students from across Marion County participate in competitive events during the convention. Some highlights of these competitions include Ashlyn Neal placing first in the extemporaneous public speaking contest, as well as Amanda Paget and Ben Chase-Ritten from North Marion High School, who placed first in the Agri Science Fair. These students will be advancing to the national contest in October.
Marion County has two students who were named State Star and Proficiency finalist, which is an award based on their supervised agriculture experience. Multiple chapters were also recognized for many awards, including 100% Membership, Premier Chapter, and Florida's Finest FFA Chapter. Many members who also participated in Courtesy Corps, the Agriculture Education Institute, and State Talent. We hope that you join us in congratulating all of these members. Once again, thank you for allowing us to be here today to explain a little bit more about what this blue jacket represents and for your continued support of our organization. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for coming out so early this morning on your summer vacation. So, thank you. We appreciate you being here. Superintendent?
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Great to see you. Remarkable young women we have. I recommend approval of the agenda for June 28, 2022, School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet, those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the items D-27.1 and D-29.1 that have been placed under discussion, and items C-8.1, C-9.1, C-9.3, C-9.4, C-9.5, C-10.2, C-11.1, C-12.1, C-14.2, C-15.1, C-17.1, C-17.2, C-17.5, C-17.6, C-18.1, C-19.1, C-22.5, C-25.2, C-26.1, C-26.2, C-26.3, C-26.4, and C-25.1 that have been pulled for discussion. Thank you.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Summon.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throer. All raise for vote. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass him down. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 10, 2022 School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Throer.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 19, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Throer. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unasked the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing person who wished to address the School Board this morning.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of the agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's Clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. Speakers, tonight's speaker, today's speakers, sorry, this morning's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal texts and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless that statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, or position of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
We have eight speakers this morning?
Eight.
Yes, sir. They're all on the same topic? No, they're on various topics.
So, okay, so who's the first one?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Madam Superintendent, other School Board Members. My name is Whitfield Jenkins, 2200 Northwest 24th Road, Ocala, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning and speak. I had two items. I couldn't find the first one out there, so I'll just kind of basically summarize and leave it in that manner, and maybe after the meeting I can get with someone and they can be more specific on the item that I'm concerned about. The primary item I'm concerned about was something that came to our community indicating that the school district was involved in a process of allowing citizens to vote on the naming or renaming of Evergreen Elementary School, and you had a list of names. One of those names was the name that I decided to vote, Mr. Everett Fordham, and I think they had it listed as the Fordham Learning Academy for the new name of Evergreen School. I just want to speak in support of that name because Mr. Fordham has been a person that has been three generations here in this community. Matter of fact, he was a administrator in the school system when I was a student in the school system, and I'm 81 years old. And since then, Mr. Fordham remained in the system as a mom through my grandparent, and I know him very well, and thank God, he's still with us today. He's into his 90s, but I know this would mean so much to him because when you know the kind of person Mr. Fordham was, he was not just an educator teacher within the work day. Mr. Fordham came into the community and used his leadership skills and his relationship with the school district to provide so many opportunities for so many young people, and if I don't know what his conscious levels is right now, but I would almost bet you that his mindset is right now in doing something for young people in the community. I don't know the entire process for the, the rest of the process for naming the school, but I, I thought about it as I was coming up, those early years with Mr. Fordham. You have a section of this school right here, named after someone that I had the opportunity to meet when I first got my employment with the Marion County School System in 1967, Mr. Mac Dunwood. He was superintendent of schools when I was, got my first job at Osceola Community, Osceola Junior High School at that time. And I've, every time I drive past there and I see Mr. Mac Dunwood's name, it kind of reminds me of those, that time period, those years. So I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in support of naming the school, the school, the Ed Fordham Learning Academy. The second item I had that I couldn't find in the agenda was, I was aware that you, you had a discussion and it reached the paper related to a complaint, and you were indicating that you was going to either dismiss the complaint or either send it to Tallahassee for Tallahassee investigation of the complaint. I couldn't understand why would the school district do that. It looked like to me that if you had a complaint, you would process it all the way through as opposed to deciding that you just was going to drop it. It just didn't seem to me that you was giving the citizens their opportunity to have, have a proper judicial outcome of the complaint. So maybe if someone can speak to me after the meeting and kind of give me more education on your decision and what you plan to do, maybe that would be my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Chairman Cummings, Superintendent Gullett, remainder School Board Members. I do thank you for the opportunity, I didn't ask for, it was thrust upon me. I don't have a prepared presentation, but I can speak from my heart and from my passion. I'm a former educator, 45 years, retired now. I was born, I'm so sorry, 11804 Bostick Street, Dunellen, Florida, and you've called my name. Sorry, I start rather, I'm a teacher, can't help it. But I, I didn't know that I was speaking this morning, and that's fine. I probably less than my five minutes allotted. However, I was born and reared publicly educated in Marion County, Dunellen, Florida. Upon completing my college education, I was hired in Tampa, Florida, Hisburg County, for 45 years, and then I relocated here. And I have this passion for children, always have. I think I've always known that I was going to be an educator or somebody who worked with children. My primary concern this morning is, upon relocating and interacting with the community again, getting to know my fellow citizens of Dunellen and working with teachers, current educators, and retired educators, I noticed that though we had black physical education teachers, there are no black classroom teachers in the schools, and I say that I'm concerned about that because our kids need to see somebody who looks like them more so than others at times, because I taught with children, and, but I need somebody who looks like me or they're saying they're picking on me because, you know, we don't need that. We need our children to have role models also that they can identify with on a personal, emotional, and cultural level. Schools are very well-integrated, staff in some places more so than others, but everybody goes home to their own culture that's prevalent in their own communities, and I would like to see more classroom teachers of the black ethnicity. They can identify better with certain problems that other children don't have. They really can. They can feel, you know, the pain. They can go into these homes and talk to these parents one-on-one. Many times, other teachers can't do that. They understand where the children are coming from, and there's a certain type of affinity based on historical, okay, values, historical teachings, historical experiences. To, to, to make it, to sum it up, there was a preacher told a story about a young man who had a son who was scared of the dark, and he told his dad, there's somebody in here with me. So dad comes in, talks with him, tells him there's no reason to fear, turns on the lights, looks under the bed, does all of these things. See and remember, son, Jesus is with you. And the little boy said, yeah, but I need somebody who has some skin. So that's how these children, they need somebody sometimes to look like them. They're going to go and talk to someone who looks like them more so, and that's normal for everybody. See it all the time. And I've worked with children of all ethnicities. I just was interested in knowing if we could possibly find some way to get some more teachers of color in the classrooms. Thank you very kindly for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
Mr. Daniel King?
Is the timer showing?
It's not, but Attorney Powers is keeping it. Maybe can you give him a one-minute warning?
Sure.
Thanks. The timer isn't showing, so he's keeping the time.
I see. We need to be timed. Daniel King, 12600 Southwest Highway 484, Dunellen. I've addressed, actually, what I'm addressing right now is exactly what I addressed in part anyhow, May 11th of last year. We have a, I'm still a concerned parent, citizen, grandparent, still praying for the Board, for every one of you. I know that every one of you are doing what you try to, what you think is the right thing to do, so I have nothing personal against anyone or for anyone, but we have a, I presented to you a But we have a, um, I presented to you a, um, talked about critical race theory. I know the governor passed a law, said we can't. On a federal level, they're trying it again on a very high level, and things flow down. And we tend to, as, um, organizations, because it's difficult to push back. You can't push the rope up, up the hill, right? But a lot of times, we accept what is pushed down to us. And I've seen this board talk about things, and we can't stand against it because in Alusha County or because this county or Polk County, other counties, it's already been, pre, pre, uh, the precedent has been set. I'm suggesting one thing, that as a citizen of Marion County, I expected this board to push back against things like critical race theory is not being taught in our schools. I understand by that name. I understand actually the need for a lot of the social, emotional learning because the kids aren't being taught at home, and that's a problem with parents. It's a problem, I believe, with, uh, the clergy, the pastors, the, the, uh, Christian educators, the patriots, not teaching the kids properly or so they better integrate into society. But we have to look at what those things really are. Forty-one percent of the math books were rejected because of innuendos and suggestions and things that are in those books that are incorrect for children, either whether sexual or whether it is that you don't need to have a, you know, fifth grader, fourth grader knowing about a lot of things yet. In my opinion, I think a lot of people believe that. As well as, um, anyway, I introduced, um, what was, what's called the seventeen seventy-six pledge. Um, and really, the seventeen seventy-six pledge, I said, I'm, I'm going to hold my elected officials, whether it's school board or county commissioners, city commissioners, uh, to the seventeen seventy-six pledge. I was grateful that I was able to, uh, provide that for different people. Many governors have, um, have signed on to it last year and even this year. I'm just going to read it real quick. I don't know how long I have yet, but, um, "To restore honest patriotic education that cultivates in our children a profound love for our country, promote a curriculum that teaches that all children are created equal, have equal moral value under God or Constitution and law, and are members of a national community united by our founding principles. Prohibit any curriculum that pits students against one another on the basis of race or sex. Prevent schools from politicizing education by prohibiting, uh, any curriculum that requires students to protest and lobby during our, during or after school." Ms. Jones was here about a month ago and speaking about how parents are coming to her and her organization, uh, concerned. And then we found out that even in Marion County, as conservative as we are out in the, out in the, uh, Ocala National Forest, there's a school that has hidden clubs that most parents would not want their kids to go to.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So I ask again what the board is going to do to alleviate that and help that still to parents. And first of all, I'm looking at the parents. I'm looking at the pastors to come here on, on these Tuesday mornings. Now, that's not our excuse. You can't, you don't have a service on Tuesday night. Come and suggest what's going on, learn what's going on. And, um, sometimes we, in business, leadership, we get lazy. We get compliant, complacent, and, um, sometimes it's a time for a change. So I think we all need to look at what we have in our county and the leadership of our county to decide who we want leading the school board as well as the rest of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Ms. Barbara Brooks?
Good morning. I am Dr. Barbara J. Brooks at sixteen thirty-six Southwest Thirty-first Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven four. Greetings to all. Uh, recently, I appeared before the school board in regards to disciplinary practice in the Marion County Public Schools and support of the Marion County Public Schools' social workers who, at that time, related their report of the, of the disciplinary data, which revealed the inequity of referrals in-school and out-school suspensions as well as expulsions. At that time, I recommended a task force be formed by the Marion County Public Schools to include businesses, parents, students, um, Marion County Public School officials, community leaders. The question is, at this time, what has been the movement towards the implementation of the task force? My second comment has to do with the racial insensitivity and comments by school board member after that particular meeting, which is an indication of concerns about the language, how it's used, what is being said, and the sheer insensitivity of, of people, especially among our officials, that we need to look into and that we really need to, uh, consider this very seriously, uh, how it affects not only the people who work in the Marion County Public School Systems, but of course, how we lead, uh, as it relates to, uh, governing the policies of the Marion County Public School System. As always, when I comment on issues and speak before any, uh, officials or certainly the board, I ask the question, what is the plan? I continue to ask, what is the plan? What is the plan in regards to how we're moving towards, uh, making sure that we have the inclusion, the equity, uh, as it relates to disciplinary practices, uh, in, with governing the policies of our, uh, children in the Marion County Public School System? So my comments are short because I've appeared before you many times about the same issues. So I'm just doing my part to follow up and to keep this before the board in terms of what is the plan? Let's make sure that we are moving forward. Uh, I'm sure that you, as officials, and those who have been charged to govern and make those policies and decisions as they govern our children in the Marion County Public Schools, I'm sure you want to do your best. And I'm sure that you will continue to move forward. And I'm just here to encourage and to support. And also to say that those people who work in the Marion County Public School System, who come before you with their concerns, we want to make sure that they feel that they have your support and that there will be no repercussions because they present the data and that they present their concern. They're doing it in the interest of our students, just as I'm sure that you are there because you are concerned about our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
Mr. Gary White?
Gary White, Ocala, Florida. Good morning. I'm here representing the It's Your Florida Tea Party. We, uh, watch over you and support you and look at, uh, what you do and report it back to, uh, a group of people that, that runs in, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety, uh, people to have conversation with and have them be aware of the things that go on here at the school board. I want to say it's too late. We have kindergarten as a leveling device. Uh, that hadn't worked. And now we have another kindergarten where we're going to have to hire more teachers, which, answering one comment previous to mine, this human resources group would hire anybody if they could find them. We are short of teachers. To get anybody in front of the class is a great and astounding chore. So when you're short of teachers and you're short of buses and you're sho- short of money, why do we create a leveling device, which hasn't worked and the other leveling device, to bring children of kindergarten, un- pre-kindergarten, into a classroom? We've got no teachers, and they're master, they, they require a master's degrees? It, and that's the reason I say it's too late. It's already been done. I hope somehow or other, this conversation I'm having you this morning will be looked at again, and you will revert back to the kindergarten we have. This leveling device has put us at, in kindergarten, at fifty-ninth out of sixty-nine districts. That hasn't changed. That hasn't changed over the last four years, probably the last eight years. Having an investigation, a costly investigation of, uh, one of your members who has never done anything but want to have investigations and analy- analyzations of monetary expenditures and the things you're doing has always lifted you up as individuals is absolutely absurd. And that needs to be discarded, and we need to do on with business and spend money where money needs to be spent. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Ms. Brittany Jenkins? Ms. Brittany Jenkins? Mr. Brandon Cave, Senior?
Good morning. I'm Apostle Brandon D. Cave, Senior, seventy-two thirty-one Northwest Highway two-twenty-five A, Ocala, Florida. Good morning again, and thank you all for this opportunity to share a couple of items of concern. I am a proud grandfather of eleven. Two of my grandchildren have already graduated from the Marion County School District. So I have nine other grandchildren that I'm hoping and anticipating will graduate as well. But in this very building, in the nineties, I was privileged to serve on a school advisory committee. And at that time, there were some hiring inequities at this particular school. And from the standpoint of the school advisory committee, there was put, uh, the school advisory committee made some recommendations to the principal. And from that, they developed a, uh, a task force of people that included some of the advisory board members. And we were able to do some recruiting at that time to get some black coaches and also to make some changes in the classroom because the behavior of the students at that time was really, really going crazy. One of our observations as we came on campus was we walked around Forest High School, up and down the halls, and the administration of the school was asking our men and women to be men and women. Yet, we found as we walked around campus that the signs on the bathroom doors said, "Boys and Girls." Almost everywhere you went on this campus, nothing referred to men or women. So one of the things that we said, and we recommended that, listen, if we want our children to act like men and women, apparently, we need to change the mindset and probably do some cosmetic kinds of things around the school to promote that. That was taken, and it was done. We also went around to the classroom and visited some of the classrooms that were troublesome. And at that time, we identified that there were several teachers, and I love teaching, who did not have control of the classroom. And we just kind of suggested to the principal at that time that maybe that particular role for this particular person probably had, their time had run out. So what am I really saying? I'm saying that, as someone has already stated, I would like to know what is it that the school board is doing? Or how can we, as a community, help our students? I was born black, and I'm going to be black until I die. I don't want to make this a racial issue, but I do believe that there need to be some representation in our schools of African, African-American descent in the positions of principal. I know that there are people who are qualified, but it seems as though they're being omitted. I don't want to say anything else about that. Please give that some consideration. The second point I want to make is because of everything that's happening around the world now in the area of violence on, on school campuses, I would like to see, and I'm sure there's something already being done in this, like, I would like to see the school board implement a safety and security interdiction team, a concept.
You have one minute remaining.
That concept would basically involve people from our community, even students at our schools, that we go into the schools and rather than being reactive to something that happens on campuses, we need to be proactive and mitigate things from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cave?
Reverend Richard Howard, Senior?
Good morning to Chair Cummings and, and to Vice Chair Campbell and to all the, other board members and to our superintendent, Dr. Gullett, Richard Howard, Senior, forty-six hundred, forty-nine hundred Southwest, forty-sixth Court, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven four. I stand before you this morning to make a statement, ask a question, is that as I read the paper and kept up, uh, on the investigation that you all had, that you've done in the Marion County School System, we had an investigation, and there were some findings. And I stand to ask the question, what are we going to do with the findings that, that we found that was violations of people human rights? And that will that investigation go to Tallahassee, to our governor, for our governor to make a decision? I think that, that, um, the investigation should not stay at Marion County, but it needs to go to the governor and his office that they make a decision on the findings. Second, I stand to speak about in, in our school system, as I travel over all of our, a lot of our schools in Marion County, I support the Marion County School System. But as I travel over the Marion County School System and officiate football and basketball, so I get a chance to go to all the high schools and the middle school programs, and I look and I see, uh, principals, our assistant principals who greet us. And I have a concern this morning that in our promotion of African-American principals and assistant principals, that we don't have enough, we have some in the pool, in the administration pool. And I want to know how the community can help the school board and that we put the people, the candidates, in a position to be promoted. And I also noticed that when we, they are promoted to assistant principals, they are not promoted, uh, in curriculum, but most of our African-American assistant principals is in discipline. So that limit them to be prepared for promotion. Also, is that, I found out this, is that I s- I speak to the school board members, our superintendent, and I've, I've heard that there's the issue on, on interviewing of African-Americans. And I, I asked the board today, are we preparing our assistant principals, all of them, to become principals? And if they are not prepared for interviews, what are the principals doing? And what is our superintendent doing? We need to have something in place that we can prepare. And everybody does not interview well. That don't mean they cannot do the job. Amen? I know you're not in church, but you can say amen. But, uh, they, because you don't interview, children are in reading classes, and they pass, and the teacher teach them. When they get to the state test, sometime, they don't do so well. When they get to the state test, sometime, they don't do so well. But when they're in the classroom, they do well. Everybody does not take tests well, and some people don't interview well, but they still can do the job. So let's prepare our African-Americans, let's prepare our Hispanics, that we will have more assistant principals and principals in the Marion County School System. And I think we need to get a task force and there's people in the community who are willing to help you. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Reverend Howard.
Our final speaker is Bishop David Stockton.
He's coming.
Did the other person come? Tiffany?
Good afternoon, Bishop James David Stockton.
Good morning.
Four-eighty-four Emerald Road, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-two. Greetings to everyone. Good to see you. Glad to be here in the land of, somebody told me it's good to be seen. And I'm glad to see you also. I want to talk this morning just for a few seconds, and if I would title it, I would say Words Matter. I was taught a long time ago that we have life and death and the power of our tongue. I was also taught that if you call, tell somebody, one of the worst things you can do to the mindset of a child or individual is to say something like, in anger, you're going to be just like. It plants a seed and it creates a culture and a mindset that grows and it, and it just keeps going and going. With that being said, living here in Marion County, one of the first things I recognize and experience is the size and scope of our county. There's so much going on, there's so many people, so much diversity, there's so many cultural, different cultural aspects. And realizing this, I saw that this county has this vast range of culture and experience. And I've been a community leader since moving to Florida. Marion County was my first experience in Florida. I've never lived anywhere else in Florida. Marion County in Ocala had was, has set the tenor of my entire Florida experience. I come here from Los Angeles, being born and raised in Columbus, Ohio, pastoring for many years in Charleston, West Virginia. And after eight years, I understand that Marion County is part of a greater whole. Marion County is so much a big, a small piece of something bigger. I'm, I'm trying to get somewhere and I'll make it quick. And with that being said, when you look at Marion County within the whole of our great nation, there is a problem with congeniality and the unity of our country right now. There is, there's a definite issue. We've heard today, different thoughts and processes and even a pledge that was administered or brought forth in 2020 under our President Donald Trump, but it tried to utilize seventeen-seventy-six principles when there weren't, when there wasn't as much diversity in culture as there is today. I say this as president of Marion County Branch of the NAACP, a father, a pastor, I wanted to be known that we support the efforts of everyone that has something to do with the molding and the shaping of our young ones, our children. Our children are our life force, our lifeblood. And if we don't support them and motivate them and help lead them and guide them, I, I learned recently and during the translation, and I know I have different scholars in here, there's a scripture that says, "Spare the rod, you spoil the child." But in actuality, it says, "If you spare the rod, you hate your child," is the translation. And that doesn't mean corporal punishment and, but it means if you're not effective and active in their life, you really can't say you love them. If you, if you're using wrong words and terms, you can't really say that you love them. You can't really say that you're here. And a few months ago, I was here in support of data that was presented to our community about some disparities in, in the culture and the climate of our kiddos. Everybody's not really getting, seeing the same results in this wonderful school system with these vast county of great experiences and things of that nature. And from that, not only did we learn some information that kind of shook me or shook a lot of us in disparity, we, we have been part of some behind-the-scenes workforce and task force to, to do some things. In that meeting, there were some words that were utilized from people in position. And for whatever reason, for whatever excuse given that these words were used, some of the very ones that work with our kiddos and bring forth the data and the information, they were hurt. They were hurt and they became concerned, so much so that they put in a legal redress form to the NAACP to do research. It's my understanding that investigation has been done and there has been some findings. My question is, are we going to continue to allow our children to feel this sense of divisiveness through adults who should be leading us and guiding us? Will we continue to protect and support those who do have hands-on and helping our community? We cannot continue to allow these words to be seeds in our community because words do matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stockton.
Ms. Brittany Jenkins?
My name is Brittany Jenkins, P.O. I come before you today, I am unprepared to speak, however, please pardon my stuttering and my anxiety. I come to speak about some personal experiences that I've had since entering Marion County public schools, not just as an employee, but now as a parent and a community member, as I'm a stakeholder in this community, as a social worker. Since I moved here, my daughter has been attending College Park Elementary, and unfortunately, she has succumbed to some bullying at the hands of not just students, but also staff members. And when I decided to bring these issues forth, unfortunately, I was retaliated against and almost bullied in a, in a sense by an administrator. I stood my ground, I followed up with an email and notified that administrator that I would never speak to them again verbally, that my future correspondences would always be in writing. I was made to feel that my concerns as a parent were not legitimate because they had not been brought forth to that person sooner. As a social worker, it is my duty, my obligation to the community, to children, to people, just people in general, to make sure that their dignity and respect and worth is always respected. And when I can't get that and provide that for my own child, there's a problem. I come to you today to ask that we develop some type of plan of action to ensure that these types of administrators and people who are serving our children, that are supposed to be serving our children, do what's in the best interest of the child. Unfortunately, I felt that my child is no longer safe at that school, emotionally, mentally, physically. She's not safe there. And since I've had to withdraw my baby and move her somewhere that she can be safe, where she can thrive, where she doesn't cry if she gets something wrong because she's been beat down so bad, or if you look at her the wrong way, that she's jumping or crying in a corner or shutting down, I'm begging that our district do something. We can't sit back and watch it happen any longer. We can't pass it down the, the chain and expect the people that we have in these positions to take action because they're not going to follow through. Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins?
Yes.
Superintendent, which one of the areas superintendent is?
Thank you. Ms. Keiner is available right there, if you would mind speaking with her and sharing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, Mrs. Stockton?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments this morning. Stay tuned. May I have a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 MCPS Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan?
May I approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. Superintendent.
Thank you. The 2022-2023 MCPS Marion County Public Schools Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan is in compliance with Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Safety Act, which is Chapter twenty-twenty-one dash one-seventy-six laws of Florida. Thank you.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2022-2023 Marion County Public Schools' Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan? Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
One was not able to vote, so motion, it passes four-one, four-oh, four-zero. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-eight-point-one through C-twenty-six-point-four, with exception of items D-twenty-seven-point-one and D-twenty-nine-point-one that has been placed on the discussion, and item C-eight-point-one, C-nine-point-one, C-nine-point-three, C-nine-point-four, C-nine-point-five, C-ten-point-two, C-eleven-point-one, C-twelve-point-one, C-fourteen-point-two, C-fifteen-point-one, C-seventeen-point-one, C-seventeen-point-two, C-seventeen-point-five, C-seventeen-point-six, C-eighteen-point-one, C-nineteen-point-one, C-twenty-two-point-five, C-twenty-five-point-two, C-twenty-six-point-one, C-twenty-six-point-two, C-twenty-six-point-three, C-twenty-six-point-four, and C-twenty-five-point-one that have been pulled for discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. There being no discussion, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four-zero. May I have a motion to approve the naming of the Early Learning Site?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Come on, Dr. Hembro.
She's not moving with her usual speed and smoothness.
No, ma'am. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. As you know, we have been working through the process of renaming, or naming the Early Childhood Learning Academy. And at the work session on June the sixteenth, Mrs. Beck reviewed with you the process that we had already begun, effective the end of May, when the announcement was made that we would name this Early Learning Academy. And at that June sixteenth work session, she reviewed with you specifically the school board policy, specifically criteria D and E about the naming of facilities. And Attorney Powers has been kind enough to print copies of that board policy for you today. And in addition, at that board meeting, there was a request by board members to send out a second survey with some of the names from the initial survey and the opportunity for each of the board members to also write in one of, a name for themselves as well. And so this survey went out using a Google survey platform and was shared in various media outlets. And so my purpose here today is to share the results of all eight of those names, which I believe you also have been, have received as well. So here are the results in order. So Fordham Early Learning Academy received fifty-six-point-two percent of the votes. Marion Early Learning Academy received sixteen-point-three percent of the votes. Hope, Helping Our Pupils Excel Academy, received nine-point-two percent of the votes. Brick City Early Learning Academy received eight-point-seven percent of the votes. And Bright Stars Early Learning Academy received six-point-eight percent of the votes. First Light Academy received one-point-four percent of the votes. Bright Stars Elementary received one-point-one percent of the votes. And Bright Star Learning received point-three percent of the votes. And so I turned it over to the school board for discussion and for naming.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question. Dr. Hembro, how many total participants did we have?
Thank you, Board Member Thora. I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Ms. DeBec, who has all of those data points for this particular question.
I think it was about six hundred and fifty-five.
It's six sixty-four, according to.
Six something, but, thank you.
Thanks.
What was, what was the percentage again for the top three?
Yes, sir. Fordham Early Learn Academy received fifty-six-point-two percent of the votes. Marion Early Learning Academy received sixteen-point-three percent. Hope, which stands for Helping Our Pupils Excel Academy, received nine-point-two percent of the votes. Those were the top three.
Thank you. Board Members? Mr.?
Thank you. I'll go out of the gate on this one. I followed this with, with great interest. It's, it's not all that common to have the opportunity to name a school. And I hope the community understands now that, that we do listen and that's why we put these surveys out there. I'm, I'm a big fan of that. We provide the opportunity and then people can choose whether or not to take it. So moving forward, I would encourage the community to participate, know that you're being heard. That being said, I'm thinking about precedence and history. And I learned something through this process. And I can't say that I was familiar with Dr. Fordham, Mr. Fordham, I can't remember if he actually had his doctorate, but I was not familiar with that person and now I am. And the precedence of Mr. Dunwoodie having our professional development section of, of this campus named after him sets a wonderful precedent to honor our local education heroes. So personally, I was really glad to learn about the existence of, of Mr. Fordham, let alone what he has done for education over so many years in our community. And, and the fact that he's still alive and has the potential to be here, to get this acknowledgement, is pretty darn special. So with fifty, more than fifty-six percent of those that participated feeling the same way, I'm very comfortable with my recommendation that, that we go with Fordham Early Learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thora. Ms. Campbell?
Sure. Having not been a part of the original discussion, I wasn't present the day that you all had this original discussion and when they called and asked if I had another recommendation. Mine was just generic, like, let's go with Marion Early Learning and let's just see what happens. And then obviously, we put it out to the survey. I too, like Ms. Thora was not as familiar with, with Mr. Fordham or his accomplishments and his, the, the impact that he made. I learned a little bit about that when I was at the Dr. N.H. Jones Time Capsule, and he was mentioned there as well, the removal of the Time Capsule and, and the impact that, that he has made on various members throughout our community. I, I see that the people have spoken as far as the name being brought forth. I too have absolutely no, I'll say I have no problem with naming something in honor of someone when honor is due. And based on the information that I've received and that we've received as a board, in addition to the survey responses, I completely concur with Ms. Thora's comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Bronny?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Would you turn that so I can reference because I don't have that at hand? Yes, I, I like the, first of all, I'd like to say that I think we have two things going on here, one naming a program and one naming a school. And I'd like to, I'd like to be sure, because the, the program is kind of a startup program. It's sort of, at least in, in the early discussion, we talked about it being like a test program. The school, however, is permanent. And I do like this idea out of, of Fordham Academy because it is a location and it's a school and it could be, I mean, this is going to go on. I, I'm, I'm using rough numbers here, but like, say seventy, in this test group that we're starting with, seventy students in a, in a facility like this, when in fact, we really do need to use the whole facility. Well- Well, it would be very hard to use it to its full extent of about a thousand students' capacity. If it wa, if it was a Fordham Academy, that's great. I believe that gets the job done, but if it's, tags each one of our individual programs we might put in there, then that would be very limiting, and if we changed this program from early learning to, let's just say, something in K through twelve, it, it would be very difficult to do. It'd be, it'd be cumbersome. So I would suggest that Fordham Academy be considered, and we take the program name out of the facility name, if that makes sense to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. King?
Yes. Well, I, I, I know, I expressed my concerns at our last meeting, that I'm usually take a stance that I am not in favor of naming any of our buildings after people, because people are just people, and, you know, sometimes they make mistakes or things just happen. But as a board member, I do listen to my constituents, and I have been persuaded to, I agree, for Fordham Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. King. In naming this Early Learning Academy, or renaming it, however we want to say it, we're expecting this academy to go forward and to be a, a beacon in the community as far as early learning. And one of the things, I, I brought forth the name Fordham because of who he is in our community, because of who he is in our community. I don't want to talk in past tense, because he's alive, and he probably is listening, if not listening, he will be. He's ninety-four years old, and he is, and, and a jewel in this community, not just in Ocala. He, he was one of those people that was already working in the Marion County Public School System prior to integration, and then came in after as a assistant principal at Osceola, and then went over to NH Jones, and even Donnellan, and groomed a lot of people. Some of the things that we heard today in public comment, as far as African-American administrators and teachers, Mr. Fordham did that. And so you all know that I feel strongly about Mr. Fordham, and hopefully he'll be around to see this, to be there at the naming, but I'm in complete agreement with the other four board members, that this Early Learning Academy name will be Fordham Early Learning Academy after today. So.
Chair, I, I do want to just bring it to the board, since we haven't had that conversation, Mr. Browning nor I was there. Mr. Browning does make an interesting point. Do we want to call it Fordham Early Learning Academy, or do we want to just call it Fordham Academy? That's the only question that I have.
Chair. Well, I think.
I mean, I understand it's going to be the early learning program.
Superintendent is.
And, yeah, I would be hoping.
It is an early learning program, correct?
Chair, yes, that's correct. Right now, the plan is for it to be early learning. It certainly could change in the future, though.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. I would, then I'll make a motion that we adjust the name to represent the, the academy rather than the program, and I will al, and, and then I'll, I'll add to that in discussion.
Let me say that, Mr. Brownie, the community voted on.
Yes.
Fordham Early Learning Academy.
And can I also add that it is currently, it was an elementary school, and if there was ever a change, it would have to be retrofitted, and it there would, it would entail a lot more than just changing a name. So it is elementary, it's equipped for elementary, unless something drastic changes, and it may in the future. Right now, it is elementary.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll adjust then my motion to, to include the term elementary, because Board Member King, I agree with that, and with Fordham Elementary Academy, that would allow a change of programs, but I, I make that motion, let's see if I have a second.
The motion's been called for, but for my input, if I may, the, if they have, the community recommendation is something to be considered by the board. It is, however, completely within the board's purview to modify it as they see fit. So there are outlines within Board Policy eight point five two, which indicate that you, as a board, may properly consider anything from a person's name to a geographic location, all those factors, but then also the name itself, community input, is obviously something that's listed on there. And the board, in its discretion, may choose to modify it, or may choose to see that community input has been significant as to one particular item, and wish to move forward with only that particular item. So a motion's been made, but I just wanted to point out that you have the ability, the board, to, within your discretion, alter it as you see fit, so.
I'll second it for the spirit of discussion, and then I have some words.
Okay.
And, and my words are, let's not overthink this. All elementary schools are early learning.
Right.
So I believe that if we're going to put options out to the community, and the community has responded so decisively, it would be one thing if it wasn't a large majority, you know, well over fifty percent, then I'd be more inclined to consider messing with it. But I'm very comfortable with Fordham Early Learning Academy. If we continue to add grades, it'll still fit. Board Member King made a very important point, that the school was designed to be an elementary school. I don't foresee that it's ever going to be anything but that, but if it is, then we'll deal with that at the time, but I say let's honor the community.
May I clarify the motion? The motion was to alter the naming of the school to.
To Fordham Elementary Academy.
Fordham Elementary Academy.
From Fordham Early Learning Academy.
All right.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think there is one yet, but it, that was.
Right.
It would have been a possibility.
What's on our agenda.
Vice Chair.
So on, just for further discussion, as we're having this conversation, I am not in favor of the way this is currently, the motion that's currently on the table, the Fordham Elementary Academy. However, I do believe, for reasons that we've heard today, in fact, when a gentleman spoke to us, I believe it was Mr. Cave, talking about having women and men on bathrooms as opposed to boys and girls, if, if, and when we actually have second graders on this campus, do they still want to be a part of an early learning academy? I, I would be all in favor, and, and while I understand that the community has spoken, they have spoken about the name Fordham. We did not give them the option of Fordham Early Learning Academy as well as Fordham Academy. And so I would be more inclined to consider just calling it Fordham Academy. We've all spoken that we want to move forward with Mr. Fordham's name being a part of this, but again, second graders may not think of themselves as early learning, and, and so we want to try to prepare them for that next grade, and so I would be in favor of, of Fordham Academy, and I know that's not the motion that's on the table right now, we haven't voted on that, but.
Well, let me say this. I think one of the, one of the tenets of this conversation is the fact that our superintendent gave us a recommendation on it becoming an early learning academy, because that is some of the language that's coming out of Tallahassee, of us having early learning academies. I understand the reason for early learning academies, because if you go back some years to the old system of elementary schools, you had primary elementary schools, and you had upper elementary schools. The primary elementary schools went from kindergarten to second grade versus the upper went from third to fifth. So I understand the premise behind it being an early learning academy. I'm not, I, I don't want us to get so stuck on the semantics of this, when we need to be educating kids and concentrating on student outcomes. I'm comfortable with Fordham Early Learning Academy, because we're reaching out to some kids that are earlier than kindergarten, from my understanding, correct, Superintendent?
That's correct.
So I'm comfortable with Fordham Early Learning Academy.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yes. I, I'll adjust my, my motion.
I, I think what we need to do is.
Vote on that.
Vote on that motion. If it fails, then make a second motion.
Oh, oh, all right, vote on that first? Okay, well.
So if, if discussion is closed, if there's no further discussion given that item.
Well, no, I, then I'll continue with the discussion, and, and perhaps then that'll help.
So technically.
Get to an answer. The, the, I, I do like Fordham, and I like Academy, because it's a facility, as I've stated. I also like the idea of Fordham Early Learning Program, and I'm just putting in program, that if we have that program and we want to name it, we want to name that program as well. That's a, that program, I think, could be named, and it would not be the sticks and bricks, because that would be the Fordham Academy. However, Fordham Early Learning, just, that's probably enough, Florida Early Learning would be an, I, I, I like the idea of having the early learning in the program and Fordham Academy in the facility, if that makes sense. Thank you.
We're, we're not naming the program, we're naming the facility.
Well, I, I was just tossing, I didn't say it got named. The program is at the Fordham Academy.
What's on the agenda is not about the naming of the program, the naming of the facility, and that's what this just says. May I have a motion to approve the naming of the early learning site? So we're not talking about the program, we're talking about the facility. So we're getting stuck on something that we don't need to get stuck on. Miss, Vice, Ms. Thora?
Yes, I'd like to call the question and vote on the motion on the table.
I second it.
The motion on the table is Attorney Powers.
In, is for the facility to be renamed Fordham Elementary Academy.
Okay. All in favor of the school being, being called Fordham Elementary Academy? Signify by aye. Polls have the same sign, aye.
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 Okay, so motion, say aye.
Original motion that's on the table, we're going to the original motion. The original motion on the table is for this, the Early Learning Academy to be named the Fordham Early Learning Academy.
And who made that motion?
I'll make it now.
Okay, well, you have to pass the, I will do that.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we name the facility Fordham Early Learning Academy.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Browning.
Yes. I would, I, I am in support of Fordham and Academy, but I do not want to, I cannot support, I shouldn't say do not want, I, I do not support the idea of early learning program in the naming of the facility. So I would suggest that we, we consider Fordham Academy, and then if we want to name that program, we take that up separately.
Call for question.
Is there any other, there's no other discussion? We have call for question. Who was the second on that motion? Sorry. We had a motion. Who was this, was Ms. Thora, okay, Ms. Thora was the second. We have called a question for the vote, all in favor of Fordham Early Learning Academy, which is the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Motion passes four to one. The new Early Learning Academy will be called Fordham Early Learning Academy. I'm passing the gavel back.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Appreciate that. May I have a motion to approve the second amended amendment with Syngage Learning Inc.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Thora. Ms. Brown, I understand you pulled item C eight point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, eight point one. Yes, thank you. Yes, this is, this is a considerable amount of money, and the idea of a government limit, and I know we've talked about this, but I think it's, it's an excellent time to address it. This exceeds the, the government informal limit of, in, in this area, that's the city of Ocala, and the board, and the Marion County, that general survey of a hundred thousand dollars. So I, my, my point is that we need to bring these items, leave them on the agenda, and not put them into a non-discussion, agreed to zone. Secondly, I think it's important that we consider items like this, once they are on the agenda, that we consider that they should never be put in the non-discussion category unless there is consensus, and there has not been consensus on this item. So I, I would just, in the future, as we go along on these items, we should have consensus before it goes into a consent agenda. Now, on this specific item, I believe that this hundred and ten thousand dollars, this is for resources, books, that type of thing, that's in the classroom and being used. I think that we should consider our, instead of going out for this kind of information, I believe we should consider going in-house through our teaching staff. We have a, we have a very large and very competent staff, and a very large management staff, and it just seems to me that we should not be going out to acquire items like this, databases, and, and if we did, resources for, for education, if we do go outside the school district for this, then we should do it once, and we learn, and then we've got it, and then we move forward, but we should not continue to do this on a regular basis. Now, if the license is such that we have to continue to repay this each year, I think we really need to look at how we're, how we're acquiring information, like this is a virtual reference library. I believe we should have our teachers develop our library in-house. I just believe it would save us, in this case, over a hundred thousand dollars, it would be ours. And if we, if we want to retain our teachers, I believe we should engage them and perhaps pay them. This kind of money is pretty significant, even though we have a lot of teachers. Anybody that would want to do this kind of work, which is really what our teachers are educated to do. So I, I'd like to consider, or propose to the board, that, that items like this, number one, be discussed at a board meeting, so that they're, they're actually discussed, and, and on this one specifically, that it. on this one specifically, that it, it be considered, before we move forward, that it be considered as an item that the teachers themselves, and I, I label them as a group, but we would have other individuals within, all the way up to the superintendent, that could actually contribute to this, and they could even be paid additionally, like taking on additional workload. So, I would, I would propose that as a point of discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. King?
Yes, after hearing your discussing, Mr. Browning, I wonder if you've actually been inside the school, you were talking about outside resources and stuff, but have you been inside of the school to understand how this system works?
You're asking me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, I'll take the floor. The, the idea, I've been in, I've been in many of our schools, the idea of a program like this, and we actually have several of these.
No, I'm talking about Gail, specifically Gail and the way the library works and stuff, like are you familiar that if a student is looking for a book, they can go on this system, and if it's not in their school, they can look on outside of the school? Like, that's just one example. So, I'm just curious if you're completely aware of this program before we shoot it down, and unless we completely understand it.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm aware that there are a lot of details that are associated with the program. The hundred and ten thousand dollars to have, let's just take a Dewey Decimal System, and let's just say that we have a, for lack of a better term, a spreadsheet that would accomplish, or a software package that would accomplish this, and we would own it, rather than to go outside, we would own it, and then we could enhance it as time goes along, and we could actually take our technical people, our academic people, and, because I'm looking, we're, we're searching for funds, and it just appears to me that this is a great opportunity, and there's others that are like this, a great opportunity to use that money in-house and to create our own program, because this is going to be a reoccurring type situation in a, in a library, say. So, it just seems to me that it is something to consider. I love the idea of software, I love the idea of owning it, and I abhor the idea of continually paying out funds when we're in the process of asking the public to give us more funds, when in fact, I think we've got an awful lot of issues that, like this one, that just come up without discussion, for example. So, that's, that's my point, thank you.
It's been discussed. I would just add that you really seriously just go in, take a look, and understand that program before you just completely try to wipe it out. And I agree, I, you know, we always need to look at spending and, you know, how it's spent and where it's, it's spent, but I think it's important to make informed decisions.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, and I do want to say, well, let's vote, and I'll say it after we vote. All in favor of this motion to approve Second Amendment with Cengage Learning Academy? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Passes four one. I want to say that there is, Mr., one of our board members just alluded to that there is an informal limit in the county or the city or the district that, of items to pull, there is no informal limit, any item can be pulled for the topic. It is not bound, there are no boundaries in regard to the cost, if it's one dollar, you can pull that item. So, this, this imaginary number of a hundred thousand dollars is not, is not factual, so we can pull any item, so I just want to make sure we clear that going forward. May I have a motion to approve agreement with N two Y LLC? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled item C nine point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Uh, yes, and I'll, I'll continue your comment if, if.
Brown, are we talking about C nine point one, please?
Yes, we are, and I have pulled the item, and I, I've been misquoted, sir, so I would just like to clear that, you were making a point, and I'll continue.
We want to, we want to stick to the agenda, C nine point one, please.
I am on, I'm on that subject, sir, and let's just, I'll, I'll just be more clear than in my comment, as I make this, as I address this particular item. This is nine point one, yes, okay, yes, no, there is no consent for this to be put into, and, and I assume we're saying pulled, that it be pulled from the table, from the normal agenda to the consent agenda. That, that's, I'm assuming that that's what you're referring to, that it's pulled to the consent agenda, and I'm, my comment, the reason I brought this back to the table is to, to the normal agenda, discussion agenda is, so that it could be discussed. The, the government limit is an informal, it is not a formal limit, and this is about halfway there, it's fifty thousand dollars, but I, I think it warrants, I think it warrants discussion, and that's why I pulled it. News, to pay fifty thousand dollars for news, I believe we can do better than that, I, I believe that we can, we can gather the news via subscription at a very, very nominal rate, and we don't need a, again, fifty thousand dollars is fifty thousand dollars, we don't need a, a, an organization to gather the news for us, and I think especially in this day and age, when there's a lot of distrust of, of news gathering organizations, I believe that we can electronically gain a news feed for almost negligible dollars. And so, I would like to see this item, again, we could even use teachers that are very expert in, in this type of service, and we could do it in-house, we could, we could buy the subscriptions, and it would just be an appropriate, it would be a way to increase teacher pay and opportunity for our staff. Thank you, Chair.
Attorney Powers, you have your hand.
Um, yes, sir, I just, for clarity, I wanted to, with respect to your discussions as a board regarding the agenda and those things, I, I believe that Mr. Browning is referring to the fact that the city of Ocala has a one hundred thousand dollar limit, and is expressing that he would like to have a similar limit within here, within which we would pull anything above that limit. So, I think that's what the conversation is about, and that is always something, of course, that the board can take up and choose to vote on at any point that it wishes. But as to a consent agenda, I want to clarify for, for everyone on the board, that a consent agenda, items get on a consent agenda, they're not, they're, they're placed there, and then anyone can remove them. They do not require consent to get on the agenda, that is, that is not the case. In fact, in order to get consent to put it on the agenda, that would require the board to take action two times. You discuss it once, get consent to put it on the agenda, discuss it again to take the action. So, the consent agenda is, the, the language of consent means that it's going forward and asking for your consent for it to proceed forward without any further discussion, because it is arguably routine or whatever. If any, in the judgment of any board member, it is non-routine or does warrant, because of the amount, for it to be pulled further, then that's at the discretion of any board member to pull it, and certainly, you know, we've, we've been doing that, but that's, I just want to, for our purposes, there's not, we don't have established the same limits if they exist that the city or county have, it's, any item, five dollars to five thousand dollars to five million dollars would be subject to you, you as a board can pull and discuss.
Right. Board Member Thor?
Thank you, Chair. To clarify, this particular agenda item is to bring the news in a format that is understandable to our most significantly disabled children. So, I would encourage anyone sitting on this board to take their personal obligation and responsibility to be informed about what our kids are really doing in the classroom and the level of support some of our kids need to visit these schools that are listed here and get a chance to see news to you and unique learning systems being taught in action. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. Attorney Powers, so, then let, let me be clear, then the consent agenda is, does not imply there's consent?
Right, the consent, with items that are on the consent agenda at the front, it's, there's no, there, there's no implication that the board consents to these items until the board takes action on the items. So, the consent agenda is a routine under Robert's Rules of Order, under which items that are considered to be routine are placed forward and emailed in advance or, or provided or distributed in advance to each board member, and the board can then brief itself on those items and determine if anyone warrants for, for the review. That gives complete autonomy to you, to each board member, to pull any item which they believe requires further discussion, as opposed to if, or, or they just wish to discuss it further, as opposed to, i- if, if you collectively all look at it, agree that it's routine, then it goes forward to get your consent in the form of a board action, the vote, to proffer it forward.
So, you're saying that the, that there is no consensus, but the, they're using the word consensus?
No, they're not using the word.
There is, they're not using, there is no consensus.
Consensus does not appear anywhere near consent agenda, they just happen to share the same root. Consensus is where the board is saying, we as a whole give consensus to an item that we're discussing. It's, it's like a vote, but has some differences from a vote. The consent agenda, not consensus, the consent agenda is one in which it's going forward, it's usually prepared by, in, in this case, the operations, the superintendent and her office, in which case they bring, staff brings forward these things to, onto the consent agenda and places them on the table in front of you. Once they're placed on the table, the board members can look at those collectively as a whole and say, we wish no further discussion, or you as a particular board member may say, I want to discuss that one or this one, in which case then it's brought forward for discussion, so.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's clarifying. So, consent does not mean consensus to, to get on that item off the general board. Okay, then the, the, the idea of items being pulled, it is informal, and we've had this discussion before, and there's been really a pretty deep look into what is normal in, in, I think it was, it was through the Gazette and the Star Banner, but the Ocala Gazette and the Ocala Star Banner, and that was just the general idea, that there was a, under Robert's Rules, it was an insignificant, small, routine-type amount, and that everyone, that, that no one was putting items on a consent agenda that was in excess of a hundred thousand or was not very, very well vetted. That's just, I'm, I'm just saying, when we're at a board meeting, a hundred thousand dollars is about, you know, it's a little past my limit, but I'll, I'm willing to go there, but that, that, I'm just saying, that's why I have put this item up for discussion, because it's, and, and I'd be glad to say that it's my limit. If that would make the, the chair more comfortable, I'd be glad to do that. I, I just have arrived at mine because the city of Ocala, the city of, everybody that they polled, nobody went beyond a hundred thousand dollars for a consent agenda. So, okay.
Ms. Thor?
I'd like to call a question.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not finished on the item.
Motion, it's been called to question. All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Passes four one. May I have a motion to approve agreement with talent assessment and Corp?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Brown, you pulled item C nine point three for discussion?
Yes, I have, thank you, thank you, Port Chair. Uh, yes. Uh, yes, this is a, this item for my limit, it is rather high, it's ninety-four thousand This is for basic, again, an outside party, for basic skills, vocational and life skills, and helping to talk about careers. I just believe we have the capacity within our school district to address things like this. We certainly have the teachers to do it, and I would believe that the teachers, again, if it's beyond the scope of what they do right now, then we should be paying them and not some outside party. Basic vocational skills, determining interests, aptitudes, competitive competitiveness, work behavior barriers, best teaching methods, golly, folks, I just, you know, every hundred thousand dollars matters, ten of them's a million, and it's a big deal, and we go through so many of these. So, this is, this is something, without question, it could be in-house, and I have not seen it, I have not discussed it yet. I would like to see some discussion on the idea of utilizing our talent, rather than go out for each one of these things to third parties and continue to do it, and we don't own it, we would own it if we, if we, if we did it ourselves, and, or perhaps we buy this in a way that we learn it once, and now we've learned it, we don't have to continue to pay. It's like your bachelor's degree, you don't continue to pay for it, you do it once, you get your certificate, and you're done. Now, you theoretically can just make things work, but I'd just like to, I, I just really wanted to discuss that and not have it go on a non-discussion consent agenda. Thank you.
Ms. Thor?
Thank you, Chair, just to clarify to the community, this is to, this particular agenda item is to upgrade outdated labs, and we all know the speed of innovation these days, so, again, I would encourage anyone to come and take a look and see what's really going on. I'm ready to vote.
All in favor, Ms. Campbell?
I was just going to make one statement, perhaps this could help us move along a little bit, to, to Mr. Browning's comments that he's making, I completely agree with the notion of teacher-created resources. I completely agree with the concept that potentially members of our staff might have an interest in curriculum development or creating databases or different things like that. However, I also understand that that would additionally come with a cost, because I'm certain, as Mr. Browning also completely appreciates intellectual property rights and private certain, as Mr. Browning also completely appreciates intellectual property rights and private enterprise. And that's what we have at stake right now. So, we have individuals that are not a part of our community, that have created resources that are intellectual property rights that they have utilized, as well as their own private enterprise, to create these resources that are applicable and necessary for our students and for our faculty and staff to do their jobs and do it well. So I am all in favor of this, especially when we're speaking of very specialized curriculum. These last two are specifically for our exceptional student population, and they're very specialized. And so, again, all in favor for our staff, employees, anyone interested in curriculum development, anyone interested in moving forward that way. But often, that is not a part of your job description, nor is it a part of something that the school district then would take proprietary rights over what you've created. And I'm certain, again, as I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I believe that Mr. Browning would be all in favor of intellectual property rights and those private enterprises that people do whenever they create their own resources. I'm ready to vote.
Also, I just want to add that by us agreeing to this program, we are following the law, on top of it all, which is impairment. You, you have to follow the law. And this is law that we're following. So I too am ready to vote.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes four one. We have a motion to approve the independent contract agreements for speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, sign language interpreters. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thora. Ms. Browning, you pull item C nine point four.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Let's see. Okay, so this is another one of these items, and it, an enormous amount of money. A million, three hundred thousand-plus dollars. It's, I, I just believe we have the staff to handle this for the earlier reasons, and this intellectual property, bilingual translations, we've got to become, I, we have all this great staff, we have to become competitive. The Supreme Court, and this one really struck me, as the Supreme Court just ruled that the funding follows the student. Well, I think we have to be cognizant of that. Arizona just passed a law, and I can see it happening all across America, that the funds follow the student. That means that we have to compete for these students in the future. It looks like that's going to be the law of the land. So, the, the idea of doing these things in-house, and, and I get it, language is a difficult thing, you do need translations, you do need these things, but I think we've got these people on board. For example, support, professional support personnel, teachers, we've got bilingual individuals that we could put into play, increasing income, be more competitive, be more effective, and, and perhaps have a more exciting product to put forward, to be competitive with alternate, alternative choices for a family who has that, those funds. It looks like, potentially, they won't come straight into a public school district in the future. I just think that this is a great opportunity. It's a million three. And we've got the people, we've got the ability, we've got the staff. I would like to see us think in that direction. Thank you.
Ms. King, then Ms. Thora?
Yes, I heard the word bilingual a couple times. This contract is not for bilingual. It is for speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and sign language interpreters. Again, this is the law. When a student has a disability or something that they need assistance with, we are following the law, we are providing the services that they deserve and they need, and that's my input on-
Thank you, Ms. King.
It's, it's not bilingual. This is a completely different-
Correct.
You know, yes.
Thora?
Sadly, or perhaps not sadly, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and sign language interpreters have education requirements to even be able to be hired into our school system. And there is a huge shortage, they're difficult to find, and even more difficult to keep. In terms of funding following the student, it's also important for the community and all board members to be aware, that even if a student attends a private school, if they have an individual education plan, otherwise known as an IEP, then we are required, as a public school district, to provide those specialized services, even in private education settings. It was a long time ago now that our kids with disabilities were welcomed, more or less, into our school system, but that has been happening since, I believe, nineteen seventy-two. And this is just meeting the requirements of that particular public law. That's all I have. I'm ready to vote.
Chair?
Ms. Browning?
Yes, yes. And I agree with obeying the law, of course. The idea of, that we can, we can achieve these things, I think, with a little bit more of a dynamic approach. Alternatively, then we own it. Then we own it. And we're in this business, and it's going to repeat again next year, and bringing these people in, the bilingual idea, that, that any communication thought, if, if we have the capabilities in-house, I just think we ought to use them. I, I understand, and I really relish the discussion. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Chair, the, the purpose of this, again, is that we don't have these people in-house. These are very specialized, trained individuals. It's as if you were, or as, as if we were asking for someone with a medical degree to all of a sudden become a, a part of Marion County Public Schools, just because it would be great to have that person. We, we don't have those positions that we would be able to fill internally, because these, again, are very specialized skills, and these are contract services that these individuals offer. And that's how we're able to accomplish this. These are not positions that are open within Marion County Public Schools.
Thank you. I heard that we were called ready to vote. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Passes unanimously. Again, you guys stated it enough, this is not about bilingual. This is about providing services to those of our students who have some disabilities. It's, it's, it's a way of equaling, or making the playing field more level for those students, so they can be successful. We have a motion to approve renewal agreement with Diamut, Diamut? Diamut? Incorporated. Corp.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Ms. Thora. Ms. Browning, you pull nine point five?
Yes, I did. Thank you. This seventy thousand dollars, very significant money. Again, this falls into an area that I believe we can handle internally. Motivating reading, how to, how to select, to, to achieve, these very skills we're looking to teach. I just think we have this capability in-house. And it just seems like it's repetitively, we, we go outside for things that we already have, or could develop internally. Like, buy the book once. Once you buy the book, if it's an appropriate item, you, you own it. You own the rights, the license, you can move forward. If we can develop them ourselves, even if it's only half of the program. It just seems to me like this is something, we can create high-interest reading materials, we can select, we can do these things. And we've got to judiciously use our funds that, that we're, we attempt to be very good stewards of. I'm not totally against it, I just, it seems like such an opportunity. Motivating reading, wow. Yeah, that, that seems like, that's what we do for a living. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Thora?
Thank you. And, and that's why it's so important for each and every board member to do their homework ahead of time on these items. What you just shared, Board Member Browning, is exactly the case. This program, Great Leaps, was actually started by a teacher at our very own North Marion Middle School. And Ken Campbell has been a pioneer in teaching reading to students. And he is a person that actually has excelled in this, and has gone forward in his own company. I'm sure you can relate to that. So, it has been a wonderful partnership. He continues to give us a great deal. I know you would appreciate that as well. As Great Leaps has evolved, it was on paper, now it has gone digital, to be able to reach students around the world. And it's a fantastic program at a great price. I'm surprised you didn't already know that. That's all I have. I'm ready to vote.
Chair, if I may. Yes, I, and I appreciate, it sounds, it sounds like very redundant to, to my comments. I do like this idea, I just don't like paying for it continually. That's the exciting part. And I, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. However, once developed, if they're developed in-house, we own them. That's the exciting part for me.
Again, I, I'm-
Just an opinion, that's, that's-
This is going to be the last time I'm going to make this statement. Whenever it's not a part of your job description, and you create something, even if you're doing it on the job, potentially, most likely in your spare time, if you're not doing it as a part of your agreement with Marion County Public Schools, that you are creating proprietary materials to only be used by Marion County Public Schools, you then have intellectual property rights of your own creation, and you can go create your own business, just like this former employee of Marion County Public Schools has done. So he continues to benefit from the wonderful resource that he created, that we also are benefiting from, because we purchase it.
At a discount.
At a discount.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes three, one. We have a motion to approve Third Amendment with Curriculum and Associates.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Thora, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Ms. Browning, you pull ten point two.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Okay, this is a similar, but, but really highly-charged item, two million dollars. And I believe two million dollars warrants discussion. Hate to be so redundant, but this is, again, we have teachers ready to accomplish this type of, of work. Eye-ready materials, improving, improving student reading and math performance. I believe we can do this and own it in-house. And even, even to the extent of going then out, if our program is that great, and there's this kind of lucrative funding by other boards that, that would want to pay for it, once you own it, you know, perhaps we can sell it. But two million dollars, I believe it warrants discussion. Two million dollars, we've gone through so many of these, we can start really making our teachers, have it be a very lucrative position, because they've got the intellectual skill, certainly. And I think it's a, if you read the description, it's, it's, it's something that we can certainly do in-house for two million dollars. I think teachers are ready to, you know, participate in, in that level of funding. Thank you, Chair.
I, I think, and I stand corrected if I'm wrong, Superintendent, the state requires us to do certain types of progress monitoring, and eye-ready is one of those that's been approved by the state for us to use to do this type of progress monitoring.
Yes, Chair, that is correct. And actually, the Department of Education has just recently, because of the new progress monitoring coming forward to us, recommended we continue to utilize one of the programs that we have, until they have provided us access to data from the new system. That is something they've encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair, apart from this being something that would, you know, be a teacher-created resource, perhaps, this particular one is also software development and, and system creation. And so those often are, are resources, or a skill set, that our educators might not necessarily have. So, this is computer-based programming, and definitely software development incorporated into something like that, if we were to go to try to create something on our own.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes four one. We have a motion to approve First Amendment to Agreement with Reliice LLC.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Ms. Browning, you pull ten, eleven point one. Wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to hear from the Board on this, on this item. It really, it really needs work, mental health. It's such, it's so important at, at every level. I, I think we should, at least in executive session, or pull in some, pull in some experts and, and really dive deep into mental health, and how it's impacting our, our schools, how it's impacting our children, our society. It just needs work. This is such an important area, and the way it, it's going right now, we seem to be going downhill. And I would just like to hear what the Board has to say or, or thinks about connecting more to our youth, and, and doing it in a way that's a little different than what we've been doing the last, you know, ten, twenty years. And that is this increased system of writing up, writing up referrals, that type of thing. It's sort of a discipline-type approach. It's, it's so complicated. We're in a new world. I would just like to hear from the Board and what your thoughts are, and this is the only time we get to discuss this, really. What your thoughts are on achieving mental health without, I was really troubled by one of our workshops, where we, where we, we broke down students into, about twenty-five percent was mentally, had mental health issues. And it just seems like that's too much for me, to be routinely dealing with it. Then it was broke down into sex, and into race, and into the, all these different categories. And it just seemed like we weren't getting where we wanted to go. And so often, this mental health idea can get spun into various concepts. So, I, I would just like to really hear from the Board, your thoughts on, on this mental health issue, and the, like, this first aid idea, and how we're dealing with our children, when we do have issues like primarily disrespect, that type of thing, and how it lends itself, it moves quickly into mental health, like, like there's a, an issue, a problem, that can't, it's just not being addressed. It seems like it's, it's like it's just an ongoing problem. So, I really, I'm, I'm open to the Board to hear what your thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you. Raw, ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Pass unanimously. I'm going to take a break. We're going to take a break, real fast. Very, very brave, because I see folks shaking up here. So, we're going to recess for seven minutes. So we're going to recess for seven minutes.
... determining career readiness, the kind of things we do for a living. This should be, again, $122,000. It's just, it's a, it's an opportunity, I think, for us to discuss the idea of teachers becoming involved and perhaps receiving some of these funds. You can see a pattern of huge opportunity for wealth within our employee base because we've got the mental capacity to pull it off, and then we would own it as a district. So I'm, you know, while I'm in favor of the item, I think it should be in-house, and I'm not in favor of continually purchasing something like this, you know, from a third party. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose have the same sign? Pass unanimously.
Oh, no, he voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Four, one. Four, one. I thought in his comments, he said he was in favor for it. I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve First Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement with United Way of Marion County in Corp., Marion Community Hospital in Corp., DBA, HCA Florida Ocala Hospital, and HCA Florida West Marion Hospital, a part of HCA Florida Ocala Hospital, Public Education Foundation of Marion County, in Corp., and the College of Central Florida?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair, by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull fourteen point two.
Yes, I did. Thank you. It certainly merits discussion. It's such a big deal. This is, you look at these names. This is the involvement of our entire community. United Way, Marion Community Hospital, Foundation, HCA Foundation of Marion County, College of Central Florida. We're partnering with these folks. This partnership is a core, I think, of the district. And the idea of putting this through and approving it, this level of partnership just warrants acknowledging it and discussing it. And I want to say a great big yes, a great big serious. Thank you to each of these for getting involved. And an absolute yes from this board member that this kind of collaboration is our, one of our keys to increasing our mission, and that is education. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Campbell.
While this would have been one, I would have gone through the consent agenda and just mentioned my comments during my board comments because it has been polled. And thank you for allowing it to warrant discussion. This is an agreement on a continuation of something that has been in place for some time. And being a part of the original United Way Education Vision Council when this idea was brought forth to the Marion County Public School System before I was ever a board member, this is a wonderful partnership, and it does deserve recognition, and it does deserve additional spotlight. So thank you for bringing that to the community's awareness today, Mr. Browning, because this is terrific. And I hope that we can replicate it and potentially have this in other schools around the community because what we're doing today, in addition to the additional agreement with Heart of Florida Health Center, is only going to enhance the opportunities within our community partnership school and schools. I'll put an S on it because that's the hope.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve disposition of tangible property?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, you pull for...
Yes, we still need to see this plan. We need to have a plan. There's so much of this money goes through for used goods. It's so exciting to see an opportunity for money to come forward. We need the money. We're asking and we're taxing the general public for money. We need to stay competitive. And these programs, this disposition tends to go out as junk or donated or just moved away. I think we had $11,000 was the total amount last year on this. So it's, it may have been 20,000, but it was a small amount in my estimation. So I want to see, I want to see a plan develop. Please, anybody that's involved with this, that can contribute to this type of a plan to help gain greater revenue from the disposal of obsolete items that may not be obsolete in the used market, please come forward. This is just too much money. Goes, I think, it just goes away. And we need the dollars. We need to be stewards of those dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve bid 3933 AH Food Service Large Equipment Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, you pull seventeen point one.
Yes, this is, this is close to a half million dollars. It's a bid. When things are this large, I'd like to see it out for discussion, if only brief, so that individuals within the community, and we aren't limited just to our community, when these bids go out, there's just not enough response to these bids. And so I would like to see discussion, at least bring it at this level prior to the vote. I don't have a problem with the item. I just want to get the word out on all of these big items that we're interested in bids nationally, and people do... bids nationally and people do chase these things down. I would like to see, we're not getting, we're not getting much response. This is 116 and I think we got four. That needs to be visited and revisited until we start getting, if you send out 30 requests, you get 25 answers because they're very, very qualified suppliers. Thank you, Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve bid 3936GM electrical supplies?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, you pull this one as well.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. Again, it's a $150,000 of a $300,000 effort. Let's see. $150,000 is a six-month estimate of a, of a annual 300,000. What I see is, again, 273 requests, two bids. I'd like to see that get cleaned up. I'd like to see these somehow get advertised better. We've got to do better when it comes to less, less than 1% response. Something's, something's really wrong with that and it's hard to get the price down if you don't have serious number of vendors. So I, it's just not good when you have two responses and I see this on a pretty regular basis. So I'd like to hear any comments the board might have as to how we, how we improve this, the bidding, bidding situation, 200 and some with two responses. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve continuing to utilize the State of Florida alternate contract source 5500000020NYACS for books and non-print library materials and related ancillary services?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, 17.5.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is a, this is a $150,000. It's, again, a large amount. I would like to, I'd like to get the idea out that we're spending that kind of money. And these are, let me, let me just refresh here because I believe these are non-print library items. These large dollar amounts, I think, need to be addressed a little bit more clearly. If it is non-print, I'm thinking that perhaps, and this was an idea that came to my mind that, that if we have print materials, it, it stays with us. It's good for more than a single year. Each one of these items, I would like to see proposed that we have committees of experts, because we certainly have the retired folks around here that could address and perhaps help on some of these items that we're spending this, these large sums on, to try to get it, maybe an alternative method. And again, the teachers, if they got involved, the librarians, rather than just to go through and continually update or reapprove earlier decisions. Thank you, board. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve reject bid 3938MF hazardous waste services term contract?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, you pull 17.6.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This really does need to get discussed. Again, 786 vendors in one bid and it was an incredibly smart move for staff to just pull this and say, hey, you know, we need to, kind of like what we've been discussing here today on these, on these spending money, we need to, we need to take a different look at this. I want to recognize our, our, our staff for not going ahead with that one bid. I, I think that it's a very smart move and, and I appreciate the diligence. Thank you, board. Thank you, board. Chairman.
Thank you. Ready for vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve general insurance package renewal for July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull 18.1.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I just want to get the word out, this is a huge amount of money, $2,500,000. I thought it's, it needs, it needs to be out there. If you're in the insurance business, these are pretty big dollars. I think we're doing well with our insurance programs. I'm, I'm very impressed, having come on the board, I'm very impressed. But if you're in the business, in the insurance management business, please get in touch. We're always open to improvement, especially at dollar amounts such as two and a half million dollars. Big deal. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
There being no further discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades Local 10-10 and the School Board of Marion County, 2022 through 2025?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, you pull this item as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is $3, $3 million and it goes to our employees. And it's a, it's a collective bargaining agreement that I know the staff really worked hard on both sides of the aisle, really worked hard on this and it came in early. I, I heard nothing but positive, positive comments. I'm very pleased to see competency of this nature and just to celebrate the idea that we do have this level of agreement and it's early and it was achieved, meeting an awful lot of criteria, important criteria. So I thought it, this should never go at least unannounced if, if not undiscussed. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
No further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve revised job description for Public Relations and Communications Office 2.40 to Communications Manager 2.40?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thor and Ms. Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull item 22.5.
Yes, I did. Thank you. This is in an incredibly important area that has to be updated, especially in this day and age. It has to be updated on a regular basis and I appreciate the facts, the fact that it is. The, the trust level of news, media, public relations in terms of promotion. Times are changing and it's important to stay on top of this. I know the superintendent's working at it and I think it needs to be recognized. Times are changing. There's so much spin that comes out of news media and promotional and agencies advertising and it's, there's a lot of self-promotion, that type of thing. And I think to be effective as a school district, I think we have to stay on this track of continually updating, improving. I know we have new personnel. I know we're, we're current personnel or current, not necessarily personnel, the current method has been in place a long time and I, for one, like to see this acknowledged to the public that we are making headway and, and the, the communication to the community is improving, I think, dramatically. So I, I wanted to bring that forward rather than have it just go through because it's such an important area. Thank you, Chair.
No further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the construction of a security fixing system at Donnellan Middle School, project number 22111?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, understand you pull 25.2.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Again, a large item and, and important. One of the issues, though, that I have is this payback, the guarantee, a 30-day guarantee. I have problems with that and I think we can drive a little harder bargain. It's a 90-day program with a 30-day guarantee of funds, so you might as well not have a bid. The, I'd like to see a lot tighter than this. Times are not that tough. Yes, there are changes to, to basic commodities, but I see them as coming down as well as going up. It depends on what the item is. 30-day guarantee and then all increases where at the owner's contingency, which is, you know, I, I just wonder about that. I'd like to see a little bit tighter controls on these large bids as they go out because there's more than one person and if they, it just needs to be, we need a little bit better protection, I think, than a 30-day price guarantee on a 90-day project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. Now I have a motion to approve school resource officer agreement with Bellevue Police Department. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Mr. Browning, understand you pull this item as well.
Yes, Chair, and we've got, we've got three here that perhaps we can pull them, I'd have to ask, see if we can pull them together, A, B, and C of Bellevue, Ocala, and...
Marion County Sheriff.
And Marion County Sheriff's Department. Can we do that? Can we pull those together?
You can address them individually, but discuss items from one within the other. They're essentially the same contract. It's just that there are some differences in, in some of the terms based on what their costs are.
Yeah, so, so can we, would we, we would vote on them separately?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We can discuss them collectively.
Collectively, discuss them. Okay, good. Well...
So if you want to lump your whole discussion about all three?
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking.
Then we'll vote on them.
Does that work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Yes, yes, because they really do, hold a second, let's see.
It'll be 26.1.
Yes, yes. Yes. They really do. So, so we'll take the, the largest, the sheriff's department really, really is the key to this. As you all know, the sheriff is the constitutional officer for safety for the entire county and these are rather large amounts and rightly so in terms of what's before us and that is hardening of our schools that are hard and we want them to be, as I term it, harder, 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 so hard that no one would misconstrue that we have hardened facilities. The idea, I thought we were going to come back and have a discussion on this. This goes out quite a distance. I thought we were going to talk about this and perhaps have some interaction. I, I'm not even sure who negotiated this or how, how it was negotiated. While I have complete confidence in these individual departments, I do like the idea of the sheriff's department being over the entirety so that we have kind of uniformity in our, these, was it, SRO officers, even if they're in a, in a city, the sheriff still has authority over it. So first, I'd just like to, you know, say, do we need another, do we need that, another executive session on this? Is the board comfortable with these numbers and the project? And was there another meeting that I missed, but is, did, did this get negotiated by someone on the board or how, how did it, how did we get to this point, I guess?
We, Mr. Browning, let me, let me kind of, we as individual board members don't negotiate those contracts. The superintendent and her team, that, and she's fully aware of everything that's in the contract and they have a team that goes and talks to the sheriff, to the chief of police, as well as to the chief, chief police Ocala, to police Bellevue, and they work out those terms. Those terms were then came back to our attorney who made sure that the contracts were in order. Am I, is that correct, Attorney Powers?
That's correct. And I also advise on those terms and assist with negotiation within our meetings with sheriff or the chief Balkin or, you know, those are, those are the factors that when the operation staff goes, I go as staff attorney to assist.
And then you did attend these?
Yes, sir. And, and I can just say, if it, if it's helpful at all, in, within the scope of these meetings, I know that one of the details is that there's some differences in the costs associated and some of the concerns that I had regarding those costs associated were laid by the fact that City of Ocala has some differently situated costs as opposed to the county, the Marion County Sheriff's Office costs because of the types of payroll that they have and not being on the same retirement system and, and several other factors. So the actual costs per officer are different and essentially this is something in which they're passing on just the costs of those officers and the training and materials that are used, including the, you know, the, the use of the, of the vehicles, for example, for that, for those purposes. And so... And so it's kind of not exactly apples and oranges. It's not exactly apples-apples comparisons. But I became comfortable that the costs that are associated with any differences between the contracts were justifiable. So everything else regarding the contracts themselves has been continued as per previous years with only the update as to that factor. Then the current contract foresees a three-year contract also, in which case if additional labor costs go up or anything, that's something that we benefit from, the fact that we're going to be locked into a, essentially, a lower rate and those will have to be absorbed by the city or county. So overall, I, in reviewing the contract itself from my perspective, acting as staff attorney during those negotiations, the only item that was really of issue beyond that was how far in advance we have to notify before the end of the contract term in order to renew or not renew. And it's kind of based on what the budgets allow and what fiscal management were permitted to do. And so we made a couple of alterations there. And overall, I believe that I was comfortable. I won't speak for the superintendent, but I know that she had a number of questions regarding those items as well so that we could make sure that we were satisfied.
Okay, and I thought we, this is helpful then. We don't have to go into an executive session. I thought we were going to get that report back in an executive session. But this is actually even better because I don't have to go into the details. And Superintendent, you were comfortable with the negotiations that you had along with the attorney and with these three parties?
Yes, sir, Mr. Browning. We had a very productive conversation each of those meetings. And I feel satisfied that we've addressed all of the issues and concerns.
Okay, thank you. Then I, my one overriding concern is, can you, can you say with clarity that the sheriff, Sheriff Woods, is happy with all three of these?
I can say with the surety that Sheriff Woods signed the contract and that Sheriff Woods is in agreement with the, all of them are in agreement.
All-
So they would not be before us if they were not in agreement.
No, I'm with that. But, and I agree that all three would have to be involved. But because, just because of the constitutional nature of the sheriff's responsibility for sheriff, for-
Sheriff is aware of all those contracts.
Yes, sir. And I can say that the sheriff, the Marion County Sheriff, as the chief law enforcement officer for the county, also has jurisdiction within the other areas of Ocala and Bellevue.
Yes.
The sheriff is very much aware of what the contracts that are there are. The sheriff has done his due diligence with these issues. And so I believe there also remains room for further flexibility if any of our parties, the school system, or the sheriff, or chief Balkin, or Bellevue, any of them decide to alter an arrangement. Collectively, we mutually agree to alter the arrangement. We've left room to do so.
Excellent. And that helps, that helps this board member, especially if something changes in a city. For example, as long as the sheriff, y'all were in those negotiations, the sheriff is comfortable because he's the bottom line for me. Not to diminish any other parties, but they could change. And the sheriff has to be the bottom line.
Well, in this, the current contract is ending. I think effective Thursday night at midnight.
I don't have a choice.
At 11:59. We were on a three-year contract. So this is a new three-year contract that we were able to negotiate and come up with, the team, Superintendent Mr. McFadden, Attorney Powers, Ms. Dobbins, all those, Ms. Mossenell's, all those that went and negotiated these contracts. The sheriff is fully involved in the process of the contracts that we just signed, and they all have signed.
That's very reassuring. Thank you. Thank you, Board Chair.
Any further discussion, guys? So we're going to vote on them one at a time. If, let me, let me, let me stand corrected. Mr. Browning, you did pull all three. So did you address your items for all three?
I did, I did, thank you. Yes, if we could, yeah, just as long as it's, this has to be dead on the money, legal and correct.
So I will, I will call for the vote on each one individually.
Thank you.
Even though, without any further discussion.
Yes, yes, without further discussion on my part. Yes, absolutely.
So we're ready to vote on item 26.1, which is school resource officer agreement with Bellevue Police Department. Are we ready for question? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve school resource officer agreement with Marion County Sheriff's Office?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve school resource officer agreement with the Ocala Police Department?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Thor. All in favor signify by, any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Second Amendment to Raptor visitor management software and emergency management license?
Motion.
Accountability and reunification.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pulled this item as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and my concerns on this were the, just the idea of constitutionality of sharing with a third party information as it's, as it's brought forward. Issues, First Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Ninth Amendment. The idea of search and seizure, of no warrant, but going out with further inquiry, especially of a third party, without probable cause, just routine, on a routine basis. I'd just like to, I would like to hear from the, from the board, is this the right approach? And from the, from our attorney, have, are we on solid ground with this? Because it seems to me that if you come in, you certainly sign in. But, but at that point, what happens? Are you undergoing like a background check? Is, what's going on with this? And does it go to a third party? And are we disclosing that fully? Those are the kind of concerns that I'd like to, I'd like to see addressed. Thank you.
I can address some of those. And you can tell me if that properly addresses what you're asking. Raptor is software management. We have a third-party Raptor, which is used by a number of districts. We have a data share agreement with them so that any information that we share with them is solely used for the purpose intended. And there's contractually binding provisions, and they have to audit and everything else like that. So it's made to be very secure. And the point of Raptor is, that's the point of entry to the schools. When you go into a school and you sign in, under a number of Florida legislative statutes, including Jessica Lunsford Act, for example, and including some of the requirements of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas legislation, it is required that visitors to the school campus be background screened. So for example, people who are, who perhaps were a sexual offender would not be permitted onto campus unless there was a specific provision by which they were there for a specific student for a specific IEP meeting or something of that nature. And so in order to navigate that system, we need to know, are these prohibited persons? Or are these persons permitted to be on campus? That information's not, you know, something that is generally needed to be retained unless that person submits information to become a school volunteer. And so the Raptor is a, is a rapid, immediate contact that allows us to be able to access and say, this person is permitted, you know, to be on campus, essentially just to clear them. And from there also, if we have employees or things like that, which we're doing a, which require a Level 2 background check, then that, that's more rigorous and that also steps outside of Raptor. But Raptor is that immediate. We're making sure that the person walking through the gates doesn't have a history or criminal history that would exclude them from being able to be present on campus, supervised or unsupervised.
And how do we, how do we determine the application? Like, is there, is this, let's see, hypothetically, going to a play, for instance? How do we do the, as a practical matter, how would this be implemented with a football game or something? Obviously, you wouldn't. Play internally, you know, perhaps you would. But how, I get a lot of calls on this kind of thing and it's, it just bears this level of explanation.
I will defer, I know, I see Mr. McFadden sitting in the audience. If I, if anything I say is not accurate, but my understanding in communications with Raptor and then also reviewing the contract each year and also discussions with, with our school safety specialists about what Raptor is there for, is there is a scan essentially of identifiable information, like for example, the driver's license. And from there, that information is not necessarily retained, but it's sent to Raptor to give us an immediate response. Is this person cleared to be able to access the campus? And there are a variety of proprietary databases that they do a rather immediate search in order to determine that. Proprietary, private and government databases in order to make those determinations. Then, once that occurs, that's for entry to and from a school site, a secure school site, as opposed to a public event, like an athletic game or something like that. Now, someone can be, by terms of their probation or terms of their status, you know, perhaps as a sexual offender or something like that, they may be prohibited from attending those events. But at that point, some of those more public events, that's on them. We don't necessarily screen every person who's coming into a, you know, football game. But if we know of someone, law enforcement is present at most of those, you know, at most of those public events. And if that person is in violation of the terms of either their probation or in violations of the terms that are set forth in the, in the Florida statutes regarding sexual offenders, for example, then that person is subject to arrest. So, but as far as the secure school site where we have students there, that's primarily what Raptor's used for.
So we could use the term inside a lock, for example? Not necessarily in the parking lot, but in, inside the facility or?
Right.
Just to give a, to give a context?
Right, Raptor is used when somebody's actually coming onto school grounds. I mean, that's the most easy way to say it.
And it's done in, in the office environment?
Right, there's a point of contact at which there's a computer terminal and Raptor's used to modify that. And a Raptor also has a number of subdivisions of software that are used for more specific purposes and specific projects that each have their own scrutiny and each have their own different security levels and each have different uses and purposes. And for instance, different data share agreements so that they are maintained in such a way that any information shared with them is not utilized beyond the sole purpose for which it's intended. Likewise, they don't share information back with us in great detail. I mean, there's not, the information that's shared back to us is essentially generally whether a person is, you know, prohibited or not, or-
Admissible or not.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Mr. McFadden, I'll invite you. Anything that I said that you need, okay, just thumbs up? Okay?
A thumbs up. Is this working?
Yes, sir.
Yes, all right, thank you.
All right, so we good with this discussion of Raptor? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the annual pre-qualification of contractors, general and building contractors for 2022, 2023?
What should you approve?
Motion by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King, Ms. Campbell. Pull this one.
I did. My business is currently working directly with one of these vendors. And so I feel it's best to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? All in favor, ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the Gray Robinson investigative report and discuss any action moving forward?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Attorney Powers?
Yes, I have additional copies here. As you know, there was a Gray Robinson investigative report. And I will just send these around for anybody that does not have a copy with you. The Gray Robinson investigative report made some findings regarding a board member. And because of that, whenever any board member is alleged to have done anything which may be in violation of board policy, the board itself does not have any control or power to be able to act against a particular board member because a board member is appointed or elected. So they're answerable to the voters and to the governor of the state of Florida. In this particular task, as a board, your duties are relatively straightforward in that the only action that is immediate that you can take is to, under Article 7, I'm sorry, Article 4, Section 7A of the Florida Constitution, you can report this, or provide this Gray Robinson report to the governor in order for the governor to review and make any determination that he wishes to make. That may include his review. It may include that no action is taken. It may include that action is recommended and taken and suspension is warranted. That's entirely within the purview of the governor and that is not something which this board has the power to collectively vote on or do. No one within the district nor other board members have the ability to suspend, remove, or in other words, in any way punish or sanction. The only limit would be that some school boards refer to it as, and some boards in general refer to it, as censure that board members are perfectly able to speak about any item within a concluded investigative report that they determine. They may choose not to speak out on that particular issue. The board collectively could decide that it wishes to make a statement. Board members individually can make a statement if they so choose. But apart from that, apart from making a statement, there's nothing further that the board can do except send any allegations of impropriety, misfeasance, malfeasance to the governor's office for the governor's review and determination. Now, as secondarily to that, in the future, the board has the option of discussing some issues with its board policies that could expand the role of how the board addresses complaints. But it would still be within that framework. There's very, there would be a lot of shoulds and mayes and not very musts or, you know, you can't grant additional power to yourselves through the, through that process. So you each have a copy of the Gray Robinson report. This report came to us as an initial hostile work environment claim. The only reason it was cognizable to be able to proceed forward at all, but given that it advised, given that it was against a board member, was because of an allegation of a potential Title VII violation. Title VII is a federal violation. It says that we, as an employer, have a duty to at least look into if there's any complaint regarding a hostile work environment based on gender or race. So otherwise, we would normally be unable to do anything regarding a complaint against a board member generally. However, if there is a hostile work environment- However, if there is a hostile work environment claim, then it is our duty as an employer for liability purposes to look into it to make sure that as an employer, we don't violate Title VII and that we provide adequate reporting procedures and assistance to employees. And apart from that, we conducted an independent investigation into those Title VII issues so that that was completed and warranted. As a result, the final investigative report is what you all have, and I would request that the board indicate to me whether they wish for me to forward this report to the office of the governor or to not do so. That's really the only question to be answered today. Some boards have an automatic provision within their policy which says upon completion of any sort of investigation or allegation or of a complaint, that it would be forwarded within 20 days of the conclusion of it to the office of the governor automatically. Since we don't have that as part of our policy, I'm here today to ask your ask for your permission to either send it to the governor or ask for the board to decide that it doesn't wish to move it forward to the governor's office.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Yes, sir.
Board members, any discussion on this one?
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, the since I'm the on the subject of this, is this a something that I should be involved in?
You, as a board member, I mean, you don't have to you don't have to recuse yourself, given that this is an action you may choose to elect to vote that it go to the governor or that it not. I mean, that's it's certainly every member of this board is affected, and you would have the right to participate in a vote as well.
Yeah, thank you. Just for for clarity, I have so the the source of this was the hostile work and the reason for it was a hostile work environment complaint. And I've asked for that numerous times. Does that ever come forward? I've never received it.
Asked for what?
The complaint.
You got a completed investigation?
Oh, the investigation, I realize that's where I'm going next is but I the complaint. Has the complaint ever?
I don't have it nor have I ever received a copy of it. I believe that that is not something that's typically released. I don't know that it's I don't I don't know. The investigative report is what I have that was summarizes.
And yes, in the investigative report, there is a summation of the complaint, which is what was investigated. So, the complaint is housed within the report.
My question is, how do we get to an investigation from a complaint? You know, I'm just asking. How do you get there? This has been six months. Now, I do have some opinions about this. They would be subjective, but how do we get from a hostile work environment complaint, which our policy says we should deal with within 10 days? And then the procedurally, it it rises to this special level of investigation, and yet, the the attorney for the school district says there was no standing, but then it rose to this five month, I think it took five months of process, then then it gets to a point of leaked several times to the press, and then it gets released to the press. And then it comes and it's said to be, what is the term used, not not found to be valid? Is that what it was? What is the term used? You just handed it to me. Oh, here it is. What does it say? Maybe you can refresh allegations.
Unsubstantiated?
It just seems to me that I have yet to figure out how this got investigated when it didn't get this complaint apparently wasn't dealt with within the district, and then it wasn't there wasn't standing, and then yet it went to this outside party, and I'm happy to have it go to the governor. The governor is really heavily involved in even my being here and follows our our meetings very closely, at least the governor's staff. And so, my concern is for any board member here or prospective board members, especially when coincidentally, at the same time this was taking place, we had some very, very important votes that were taking place and an election, folks were filing for election at the same time. And one of my primary concerns was how people considering voting, running for office, would say, whoa, I'm not I'm not going into that venue, considering this type of, I would say unprecedented and with no basis. I personally think it was harassment of myself, abuse and harassment for for my application of my duties, being thorough, voting for things and actually questioning that original out of the sunshine briefing of 10 persons to one and then a conduit of those five. Things really changed for me, and I had not actually even been to this person's office since we have moved. So, I'm what I'm saying is, how in the world did it get to this level? And is this now a precedent for any board member that a this outside party that I'm assuming was costly? I've asked for the cost that we spent. Do you happen to have that?
I don't have that immediately available.
Okay. Well, I've asked for it and I've yet to receive it. But just the idea of this taking place is, to me, is very, very hostile toward a board member, especially considering, they say they have no standing and we have policy.
Third time you've attributed this phrase, there have no standing.
That was the letter.
Please indicate what it is that you're saying.
Okay, yes.
I have never told you, you have no standing.
No, sir.
That anyone doesn't have standing.
No, it was not you. It was the what is the name superintendent? What's the name of our district, school district attorney? He's out of.
Alan Norton in blue. You're referring to the letter in which.
The letter, yes. The letter that said we have no standing.
Okay. The letter indicated that the district, the the human resources division cannot investigate the board member regarding that issue.
Is this in regards to this thing?
It is.
Okay.
So, they indicated that that the superintendent should not have to discuss the items included within the complaint with you because of the fact that it's outside their purview and jurisdiction because of what I just mentioned. Normally, a complaint against a board member does not have any, there's there's nothing that the district can do. However, where it involves a Title VII complaint, the district has a duty and obligation to determine whether its employees are need to be removed from a situation or is there some conduct there? The example that I use is if there is someone who is exercising their First Amendment right and standing on the corner yelling racial epithets at people and being mean and horrible, we can't do anything about that person because that person is not an employee and they have a First Amendment right. However, we may have an obligation. The obligation is for us to look at the matter when somebody says, hey, there's this guy. Our obligation is to look at it and say, okay, we can't do anything to that person. He's exercising a right. However, we may have a duty and obligation to put up a fence there or give employees a secondary route into work so that they aren't exposed to and don't have to tolerate or be harassed by that. So, that would be an implication of a Title VII complaint in which, although it's because of the employer is a board member, someone whom the district can't take action against, we may still have an obligation or a duty to the employee, someone who is lower within the organization, to to look into it to determine, is there any protection that needs to happen? Any action that we need to take? And that so that's why the district itself doesn't have any standing to do anything about a board member.
Or any merit? Is that part of your consideration? Any merit to the complaint?
That would be, see, the thing is, I'm not I don't do the investigation because it would be inappropriate for me to do the investigation. That's why it was referred to an outside party. But I do believe it's a mischaracterization to say that they found that there was no merit within the complaint. Essentially, what it said was, I mean.
There's some violation.
That there's there's violation of board policies, but also that the allegations as to the actual complaint, allegations one, two, three, four, and five, that complainant characterizes Member Browning's behavior toward her as unprofessional, belittling, demeaning, and berating, that was that was found to be substantiated, not unsubstantiated, substantiated. As to item two, complainant alleges Mr. Browning has called our office and made derogatory statements and includes some of those statements, and it says that that was substantiated. However, what it says is that those do not rise to the level to give the district liability under Title VII. And so, allegations one, two, three, four, and five in the complaint are substantiated, and it says it substantiated that Member Browning's behavior has caused the complainant to become distressed and upset while at work, so much so that she's requested she no longer work with him. I also substantiate the following findings. That's on page three, and it goes into a bunch of other findings. So, it was a substantiated complaint. The indication was, however, that the complaint did not rise to the level that Title VII was an issue for the district because of the fact that there was no further action that we needed to take or could have taken to prevent this situation and because we were taking immediate corrective action in placing the complainant outside of the normal chain of contact there, as well as the fact that there was no other, well, in this particular case, there were there were every every allegation that was made was substantiated. It was simply, did the district have a further obligation under Title VII? And the report indicated and reviewed the case law and cited the case law that the district had no further obligation. So.
No one's seen the complaint except for this Marchman person?
What I can tell you is, every statement within the complaint that was addressed, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven A, seven B, seven C, seven D, seven E, number eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, those were all found and substantiated.
They were in the complaint?
They were in the complaint. Right. So, because it refers to each of those as being the items from the complaint, she states the following in her complaint, and that's one, two, three, four, five, and then there was additional findings that they made beyond that as well. So, so, that's that's the clarification as to why it's not a simply a something that the lack of standing comes from the fact that the district can't operate against a board member.
The nuances of serving in a constitutionally elected position. While we are actual employees of Marion County Public Schools, we do not serve under the same rules, rights of only employees. We are serving in constitutionally elected positions. So, the duty of our school district, when an employee comes to a human resources department and indicates that they want to have an investigation on another said employee, file a complaint, excuse me, file a complaint against another said employee, it is up to our human resources department to conduct such an investigation because it was not an employee to employee, this is an employee to a constitutionally elected official, it is out of the purview of our human resources department to do that. That's how it gets handed over to an outside investigation team. Under our board policy, 10 days, absolutely. If it is an employee to an employee, student to employee, whatever that might be, and there is some kind of allegation that needs to be investigated within our human resources department, I'm certain that they conduct those investigations in a very timely fashion. But because of the nuance of serving in a constitutionally elected position, but also simultaneously being an employee of the school district, that warrants an outside investigative team that is not an employee of Marion County Public Schools to conduct said investigation.
A neutral party.
A neutral party. So, while we would not be privy to any specific complaint that's it's kind of like attorney-client privilege, when you go to your human resources department, your hope is that you have that kind of privacy to share details of things that could be very uncomfortable for you. We wouldn't want to have any employee subject to something that would constitute distress or cause social, emotional harm. And so, that's why we we were certainly obligated to conduct any kind of investigation when that type of allegation comes forth, and that's also why it took the time that it took to have the outside party do the investigation.
And as a board, any allegation or any complaint, I want to say allegation, any complaint that comes to the district or comes to supervisor of that nature would be investigated. It would be investigated. It just so happened that at this time, it rose to the occasion that the the person that was being complained, that the complaint was complaint was on is a board member, and because it's a board member, we can't investigate us. That's like asking the the Fox to investigate if he killed a kid. So, we had to send it to an outside entity, a neutral entity. They did the investigation. They brought it back. So, now that it's back, we have a responsibility to do something with it. We can't censor our own. We can't sanction our own. We don't have that ability within our own policies, correct? Attorney Powers?
That's that's correct. Only under Article four, Section seven A, only the governor has authority for suspension or displan of regarding a school board member.
If it had not been a board member that was the allegation was made, the complaint was made on, then we could have something to do, or DOA could have had something to do with it. In this case, because it is a constitutional officer, elected official, appointed official, whatever you want to call it, it's our due diligence to pass it on and move it on to the next level, and that level resolves it versus us trying to resolve this issue or or make any determination upon it. It's beyond our control. It's beyond our control. We, I think, as a board, we have to support our staff. I think we support our staff by doing, following the process of what should happen. It could have been any of us. It could be any any person beneath us in in position, and if it was if it was not a board member, we would have processed it all the way through. That's the standard procedure. It would go all the way through. And I think just because it's a board member doesn't mean that we should stop it because it's a board member. It should be processed all the way through and let due process handle whatever handle. The governor makes a determination what he wants to do or not do, and it's it's out of our hands. It's out of our hands. I was glad to hear you say that. I was, I was glad to hear you say that. You didn't have an issue with it going forward, Mr. Browning? Because that would have been, that was going to be my recommendation, that we just give it to the governor, let him decide what he wants to do with it.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Let the record show, he passed the gavel again.
She took the gavel.
Well, you can't make a motion with the gavel in your hand.
I'll make the motion that we forward this investigative report to the governor's office for disposition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair. Well, this is certainly, certainly different. I'm exceptionally happy to have the governor officially be involved. I would like to say that the, the process, from my perspective, was pretty much constructed as you went along from that original phone call by the superintendent, the lawyer, and the board chair, to which I immediately excluded the board chair for sunshine issues. And specifically, I would like to see and request a, an independent investigation of the circumstances leading up to this, while the individual certainly needs all the protections that are available and then some. The context of the preceding months of my working with superintendent and the district issues associated, even by the board members back when we initially, we initially discussed the, the request for guidance from the state attorney for potential sunshine law violations. There has been repeated, repeated, and intensifying retaliation toward this board member, and I would like to see that investigated thoroughly. There was even implications that by the board chair, at a, at our meeting, that, that I was involving slavery in requesting the 20%, not exceeding the 20% level of services from Board Services as I came onboard. And really a pretty elaborate newspaper, newspaper articles that started at that time of either I was incompetent or faking it or just incompetent by board members, and that type of language, and we were frustrated with the board members. So there was, there was, there was exceptional amount of, of conversation from staff through board members relaying my comments, like the, the idea of having meetings with superintendent out in my district schools rather than here in the district, that type of thing, just procedural issues that were going along, but as though they were improper. So these things have been, have been, have been taking place and escalating to the point where I was receiving essentially no support from Board Services. And at this point, for the last five months, I've had no content, contact at all. And have not, really have not been able to even participate in any of the district office, the new offices, never been in there. So this is a very, very serious, has very serious implications to my ability to perform my duties as assigned by the governor and as I swore to uphold. And, you know, I just do my best to, to perform these duties. And I, so I would like a, a formal investigation. I've asked for them at every level, and I've also asked through human resources for investigation based on very specific complaint. So with that said, I'm, I'm very happy to include the governor in this entire scenario. And let's move forward and follow our policy of treating individual board members with the highest level of professionalism and respect.
Vice Chair Campbell?
So, I mean, yeah, no, I have the gavel. So, so we have a motion and a second on the table as, as the final note of discussion. I'm not certain how that actually works. When I think of other elected officials and I think of the commentary, I'll, I'll use Washington, for example. If Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez might say something that would be offensive or in a harassing tone or in some kind of derogatory fashion to Kat Cammack, I just don't think there's a complaint filed. I just don't think that there's a way that can even be done. They have been elected by the electorate to do a job, and regardless of the rhetoric that occurs between them, and regardless of what kind of commentary may occur, regardless of how it may make one person feel over another, I just don't know how an investigation can take place of a constitutionally elected official to another constitutionally elected official. Now, if we're speaking of something that is illegal, some kind of just inappropriate conduct that is actually illegal, that's something different. If we're talking about ethical and, and questions of communication, I just don't know how that occurs. So we do have a motion and a second on-
Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
If, if in the process, because we heard Mr. Browning, Board Member Browning state that he wants to do a, file a complaint against the board.
I already have, sir.
Let me finish, please. Mr. Browning, Board Member Browning states he wants to file a complaint against the board. The process for him to do that complaint is he can't give it to our HR department. That complaint would need to come to this board, and we, as a board, would make a decision to move it on, the same thing we're talking about.
Send it to the governor.
Send it to the governor or whatever. And he's well within his right to file that complaint, but it must not go to the superintendent. It must come to the board for disposition further up. That's the process.
Okay. Are there, is there any further discussion? Because I'm ready to call the vote.
Call the vote.
Okay. All in favor of the motion on the floor with-
This is Roland. You guys forgot there's two other board members on here.
I'm sorry. I thought that you were just-
It was just quick, so, you know, I think we may have some-
Go for it.
Um, yes. Talking about this, you know, what we have seen, it is not in, and I'm just going to reiterate it, because sometimes we have to say things several times to make sure that they're heard and understood. But it does talk about the school board policy, right? And it's broader than the Title VII, providing that the school board does not tolerate bullying or harassment of any type. It also goes beyond Title VII's severe and pervasive standard prohibiting unwanted and repeated verbal behavior which causes discomfort or humiliation, or has the effect of substanti, substanti, I can't say that word, interfering with an employee's performance, opportunities, or benefits. That standard has been met in this case with Member Browning's offensive comments to numerous school board employees, not members, but employees and members, often publicly causing a number of them to be humiliated and avoid him so that as to protect themselves from his behavior. It was reported by various witnesses in this case that they have never been treated in this manner, or in the manner Member Browning has treated them. These dedicated public servants deserve better. That's not this board's words. That's these words.
What page are you on?
I'm on page seven of seven.
Thank you.
She does go on to say, lastly, I make no finding with respect to school board policy 627 and principals' and professional conduct for the education profession in Florida, as the policy expressly applies to the staff member Browning is a school board member. Further, I make no recommendations as to any action which can or should be taken as a result of my findings herein, as that is not within my authority. It is not in her authority, it's not in the school board's authority. I will say, as a board member, I am ashamed that we have to make a decision to send this report to our governor, and that this position should be nonpartisan, and it's very partisan. And four, and I usually don't talk about this, four of us, sir, are the same party that you are, and I have seen nothing but trying to eat each other up here and disrespect and harm our party, and it is disgusting, in my opinion. So I have looked at this as a distraction for the education of our Marion County public students. I think with you trying to put a complaint against this board, it's fine if that's what you feel you need to do, but that is to deflect your actions and your complaints, to deflect what you've done. Because you, sir, have a bruised ego, and you are the one that has harassed our employees. And I'll leave, I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Throw her?
In emotionally charged situations, I try to shift my mind more to the facts as much as I can, which I'll admit is difficult. Because I'm really passionate about my role as a school board member, and I've been steadfast in saying that each of us is individually responsible for our words and our deeds. And I stand by that. That being said, the facts are, according to my understanding, is that this complaint had to be investigated. Is that a fact, Attorney Powers?
It is.
Because of Title VII?
Yes, ma'am.
I see an opportunity as a board moving forward to codify in our board policy the automatic trigger that you mentioned. Whenever a situation like this comes up, because it's not in our purview, it needs to be codified whose purview it is, and to avoid any indication of bias, that that is the policy that we will follow. It is very unfortunate that we don't have that at this particular time. So I would like to get that on the record, that we make it a point of doing that much sooner than later. In this situation, the governor has the power, and it is what it is. That's all I have to say. I find, I'll finish by saying I find this whole thing extremely distasteful.
Vice Chair? And, and this will be my final comment on this. While the investigation was done by outside party, a neutral party, and the complaint was made as the chair, as the superintendent, as the attorney, it was our decision and authority, we have the authority to make the decision, that it would go to a outside investigative authority, correct, Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. I, I thought it was prudent that it go to an outside investigative authority, but it requires that the board not appoint a, its own, the superintendent not try to appoint her own, or that I try to appoint just my own, because I believe that that needed to be a process in which I needed to review what other boards have done specifically with these kind of instances, since we don't have board policy on it. I'm much, I have a lot of a board policy at my fingertips, but I needed to essentially determine, do we have a, an existing neutral third-party investigator who is aware of Title VII-type claims and can make a rational determination based on that? Because I don't send someone to just an random attorney friend of mine if they need probate work and that person's a criminal defense attorney. You know, I need to see who is, who has knowledge of what areas, so.
Well, it was, it was in the authority of this district to handle this situation with all due diligence and professionalism, and to make sure that this investigation went forward in such a way that it would not be tilted in either direction, but to be completely fair and just. While this investigation did say that the hostile work environment was unsubstantiated, it did say that, and that has been stated by Board Member Browning several times, but it's the fact of the matter, there's a paragraph beneath that, beneath that paragraph that says it was unsubstantiated. Yes, those hostile work environment was unsubstantiated. However, there's a however, there's a but. Member Browning's conduct, however, amounts to bullying and harassment as defined by School Board Bullying and Harassment Policy 2.15. If this had been anyone else other than a board member, this situation would have been dealt with by the district. And seeing that we do not have the authority, this board, to deal with a violation of this policy by a sitting board member, it is our, it is the due process, it is the authority to forward it to that person that does have the authority to handle it. And that is my recommendation. That is going to be my vote, that we forward it to the governor's office, and I won't have any more comments on this until we're voting.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. So I, I strongly, I strongly request the governor to investigate this entire matter and using the door that has been opened, this report that went to, anonymously went to the first meeting that I attended, which was the source of the complaint, the source of the request for guidance on sunshine law. The fact that this, these anonymous complaints that have been cited eloquently started in that September meeting and went forward beyond the date into the five-month period and included many anonymous concerns by parties. So I would request the governor, wholeheartedly request the governor, make a thorough investigation of the parties involved in the context of what I consider to be gross harassment of this board member. Thank you.
Call for vote.
Okay, we have a call for vote. All in favor of sending this complaint to the governor's office signifies by saying aye? All in favor of, of sending this complaint to the governor's office signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, passing the gavel back.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of fourteen thousand dollars?
Motion to approve.
He hasn't said the donations yet. No, we're ready.
That's right, I've done that in the past. I stand corrected. I'm always excited by this.
One thousand five hundred dollars to Bellevue Middle School from the Ocala Health, HCA Florida, Ocala Hospital via the Public Education Foundation, Marion County. One thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from First Christian Church, Disciples of Christ Romeos, the men's group, Romeo the men group, men's group. A COLT value at ten thousand dollars to North Marion High School from Valerie Daley. One thousand five hundred dollars to Westport High School from their business partner, partner, Ocala Health, HCA Florida, Ocala Hospital via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Have a motion?
You have a motion.
Seconded by, by Chair Campbell in discussion. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Post have the same signs, pass unanimously. Ms. Thor, can you handle this one today?
I think I can, and, uh, just to make sure that no one's southern accent got misinterpreted, it's a ten thousand dollar COLT, C-O-L-T, not a ten thousand dollar coat.
Colt.
Right.
Thank you for correcting the southern drawl.
And, uh, we, as always, could not be more grateful for the support of so many in the community. It's personally very exciting to me to have the, the donation of, of the COLT. The Daley family has always been very supportive of Marion County Public Schools. And not everyone knows this, but, um, if it weren't for horses, I never would have gone to college. And to know that within our school system, that we have, uh, an ongoing and an evolving fantastic partnership with our, uh, horsemen and, and horsewomen in our, in our county is of personal interest and great satisfaction to me. I think it bodes very well for our students' education. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for July seventh, twenty twenty-two at nine AM. The purposes of the work sessions discuss annual equity report, student, Code of Student Conduct two of two, and utilization of federal relief dollars and expected student outcomes. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at nine AM. The purpose of the work sessions is to discuss student progression plan. With that being said, our first morning school board meeting is almost there.
Board members?
Yeah, we're almost there. Almost there, almost there, almost there. At this time, Attorney Powers, you have any comments?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
No, sir.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, I do have a brief comment. Today, you approved, after some great discussion, the, um, contracts for our school resource officers. And I just want to say, with our vision being helping every student succeed and our core work and business being improving student outcomes, we must have a safe learning and working environment. So I want to publicly thank, um, Sheriff, um, and our chiefs for their partnership in helping us to provide that, and it's essential. So, uh, I just wanted to say thank you.
Absolutely.
Superintendent, um, you're right there, kind of where I was gonna ask a question. I know with the conversation that we were having, we were talking about, um, school safety. We, we just passed the, um, approved the, uh, contracts for our SROs. There was conversation that we had about our staff, um, that's in safe schools. Where, where are we at with that status of, of getting them to be to a level since they're at schools? And about, they're here trying to keep us safe in this, this setting, where are we at with that status of that?
So thank you, Chair. We had a, again, very, um, productive conversation with the sheriff, and he is reviewing that as we speak, and, um, is taking a look at what he can do to, to accelerate that. And he said he will get back with me, so.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
All right, 'cause we want to make sure that we stay safe. I definitely want, I, I don't want to have folk that are in a position that they can't help.
Yes.
That they can't do anything.
And I could say, Chair, that the sheriff understands that request.
Okay.
So I appreciate him looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Browning? Board comments?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just briefly, the, uh, Stanton Wearsdale, uh, the Stanton solution, uh, that we're trying to pull together. Have we had any, uh, board, if, if, if you received anything, uh, uh, Attorney Powers, uh, Superintendent, uh, that will help to mitigate the, those risks that we have? Uh, is anything, is anything taking place, uh, currently to mitigate those issues?
To mitigate?
The, the safety issues, uh, that we've been discussing at Stanton?
I'm not expecting anything further, so I don't, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Superintendent?
I'm not either.
Nothing is, nothing is in play, okay. Uh, I, I've been, uh, I've been continually involved, uh, there as, as I've indicated before. We still have the, it's, it's a little bit, uh, reduced now in terms of, uh, seriousness because we're out of school, but that will, that will change, uh, soon. And I would like to see, uh, these, these, uh, problems get solved. I'll, I'll bring forth a, some further in, in another, uh, in, you know, at another time. But, uh, the, the need for, for example, the stop sign and that type of thing, the, the safety issues do exist. And so I just wanted to see, are, were we making any headway? Apparently not. Uh, second thing is the, are we making any headway on the concept of, uh, of pulling together, uh, a workshop, uh, on the improvement of the, um, uh, the school, school board venue that we have here? The distances, the, the microphone issues, and this gap of space? Are, are we making any headway, Superintendent? Are, are we doing anything in that regard? Or is that, if, if my request's just sort of been dropped?
Yes, yes.
After, Mr. Browning, every time you've made a statement in regards to, um, the setup here, the, it has been assessed. I don't want you to think, because you, you've made the statement that nothing has been done. Every time you've made a statement about something, as far as this dais or setup, it has been addressed every meeting. Anytime you make a statement, it is addressed. We're not back there and we're up here because you made those statements. So you can continue to ask those questions as, as you like. However, don't think that they're not being taken into consideration. Mr. Christian and his team diligently tried to make it as best and comfortable and appealing to the public and workable for all of us that are here on the dais. So, um, any, any suggestion or recommendations that you have made in the past, all of them have been taken into consideration, and they will continue to go forward.
My, my concern is the, is the, I'll, I'll just call it, uh, uh, Model A, which was to set this stage, uh, as the venue. It's significantly larger than where we had been. And then Model B, that we move closer, we move closer. Or, and then Model C, that we, uh, we implement, uh, from below the stage, because there's no reason for us to be up here.
Well, your, your recommendations were considered. They have been considered, but just because they're considered don't mean that it goes into implementation. But they were taken into consideration.
Yeah, and by, I, I'm saying, is that in play, or is that a concluded?
They are being considered.
Is that a concluded, concluded situation? That's, that's my question.
It's a consideration, um, to see how it can work, how to make sure that we are projecting out in the most positive way. And, um, where we present our board, our, this product as of a board meeting that is, is most conducive for all and safe for all. It's not safe for folk to come up on here, and we hold a meeting and we face a different direction. So this is the best fit as of right now. If you have other recommendations or suggestions, I continue, I asked, I said you continue to give them to, uh, this board or to Mr. Christian. But as of right now, this is where we are. This is where we are.
Okay, and so we're not, we're, we're not implementing A, B, or C, and we aren't even looking at those?
We have looked at them.
And, and discounted?
This is where we are.
And so we have?
They have been considered. They have been considered, and this is where we are.
This is where we are.
Unless there's some other adjustment Mr. Christian can feel that we need to make, but this is where we are right now.
Um, I, I note that our, our backdrop has moved closer.
Correct.
Which helps with absorption of sound. I also note that if you move as much farther forward, then your board attorneys at risk of just dropping right off the edge, which may be what you intend.
As well as we've modified lighting, we put lighting down there at the podium. I mean, all of your consider, all of your recommendations and suggestions have been taken into consideration. Those that could have been modified or changed, they've done them up to the microphones and the speaker placements. So I don't want you to think that, um, they have not heard you or we have not heard you.
Well, perhaps, perhaps then that feedback is helpful for me. Perhaps we can look at, at what we'll call Model A. I'll, I'll give you some, I'll redo, resubmit the diagrams then and, uh, to the board. And perhaps we can, uh, we can address them, uh, in a workshop. Thank you. That'll conclude my remarks.
Ms. Campbell, you going the other way today?
Okay, uh, the only thing that I have today, Board, is that the Florida School Board Association needs us as a board to choose our advocacy representative for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. As you know, it has been my pleasure to serve in this role. I am happy to do so, to continue in that role, but it is up to the board to, uh, vote on that, actually. So it's up to us to make that decision, who will be our advocacy representative, as well as our alternate to the Florida School Board Association this next year.
Well, I thank, um, board members. I don't have a issue with, um, recommending Ms. Campbell continue to do the advocacy. She did a good job this year, and if you guys are agreement.
Thank you.
I concur.
You too.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in concurrence for that.
So, and then we need an alternate.
An alternate.
It cannot be me.
Then it can't be Ms. King, or Mr. Browning.
It could be.
Well, I could be.
It could be.
I could till November.
It could be. Ms. Thor, do you mind being their, their alternate?
Uh, uh, it would be my honor and pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And the reason I, I'm not asking, you guys know that I got a leadership position at FSBA, so that's, so all of us are active in FSBA, so. All right. That's it. Ms. Thor?
Uh, yes, just, uh, quickly, today was, uh, the first day of our first morning meeting. And I was very encouraged, even though it's summer and a lot of folks have other things on their mind than attending school board meetings. We did have eight speakers on eight separate topics, which I think is, uh, very encouraging. It was a, a good house, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to, uh, offer, um, a morning school board meeting and also evening. I think that that completes, uh, my personal commitment to the community of, of being open. And I know that that's something that every one of us on the board shares. The second thing I have is just a reminder to the community, it did jump out at me a little bit, that, uh, you don't have to provide your address when you address the school board, just simply your first and last name. And I think there's a lot of good reasons not to do that in, in this day and age, so. But a lot of us just do it out of habit, because that's the way we've always done it. So just know that it's not required, it's certainly, um, if it's what you choose to do, that's fine. The last thing I have is, uh, summer school seems to be sailing along, uh, to quote a very good pun. And I will just encourage every single school to please focus on the cell phone policy that we already have in hand. We're putting a lot of effort and spending a lot of money in helping kids accelerate and recover credits where they need to and, and, and boost up reading skills, math skills, all kinds of things this summer. And we don't, uh, none of us need the distractions of, of cell phones, um, on campus. And if they are on campus, they need to be stowed and not visible. So I know each school still has latitude as far as they implement that, that's administrative-driven. And from what I've witnessed in my school visits, the kids seem to be pretty focused. The summer seems to be going quite well, a lot of learning going on and, and a lot of happiness, too. So that's, uh, wonderful, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Board Member King?
Yes, um, I want to say, I think this may have been the first time, and maybe, who knows how before me. It was a relief, and I appreciated that we agreed on IUPAT today. And that we, um, that our district and IUPAT had met, they have agreed, and that in August, when they get their first paycheck, it's gonna be there. And there's no, you know, having to begin the school year, no apprehension, no wondering, it's taken care of. And I appreciate that, and I, I thank everyone, all those that were involved in that. Also, and a little bit more serious, uh, item, if we've been paying attention, you know, it's no secret that a lot's going on with our gas and oil and food and stuff like that. So I, with a little bit of reading, and we never know, you know, till we get forward. But it's predicted that there'll probably be some shortages with oils and maybe, you know, the gas. And I believe in some school districts, there even, uh, there's some discussion on food shortages for this fall. I hope as a, a district that we are being proactive and, and looking forward to identify that any thing that may be coming in the future, so we're not cut off guard or anything like that. And those are my concerns for today. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. King. And, and thank you to all of the board members, all of you as, uh, board members, our superintendent, to Ms. Martinez Lopez and Ms. Pressutino, Attorney Powers, and our, um, legal team, Terry and Keshla. Truly, I want to thank our, um, our audiovisual PR folk, uh, Mr. Christian and his team, for always, um, heeding the call and listening to our concerns and trying to make it better. Every week, you try to make it better and better and better and better. And, and every week I see us getting to a different place in this production. Because whether we want to call it production or not, it is a production. And it goes out to a lot of people, and, um, is viewed, um, many times over. So I, I love the fact that, um, this district puts for a quality, um, product that is pleasing to the eye to see and to hear. Um, I, I don't have a problem when I go home and re-listen to the, to the meetings. It's, it's always good to, to go back and kind of assess and evaluate where we are. And we've come a long way, Kevin. Your team has brought us a long way this afternoon. We had a few technical difficulties this morning, and we had a team of folk up here trying to make it right. And when you have a team of folk trying to make it right, because they want the product that goes forth from this district to be the best product, because they're professionals. And professionals want their product to look good, to be good, so that they can compare it to other professionals in their field. So thank you, guys. Thank you to those, that team. I mean, they were all up here diligently working, and they stayed around to make sure that this thing goes forward. And, um, they have the hard job, um, of putting it together and, and, and it's unedited. What you get is what you get. There's no, there's no going back and cutting it and making the right word fit and all that kind of stuff. It is what it is. So thank you, guys, for doing a live production, and it's always of, of high caliber and high quality. So I thank you. Recently, a few weeks ago, uh, a few, few days ago, we had a bus blitz. Marion County School District had a bus blitz, bus, bus blitz in several different locations around the county. I thank Mr. Viannello and his team and, and Ms. Rohr and her team for, um, doing that. I'm, I'm looking forward to more than just being bus blitzed. We, we, we know there's, there's vacancies and folk are leaving the district and leaving positions. And we want to try to get those people in places. As Ms. King just stated about IUPAT, that is resolved. They won't have to be waiting on any retro day one, they, they're, that's where they are. So we are hiring. I'm gonna state it out there, and they are, we are hiring. Marion County Public School District is hiring. We're hiring for everything. Bus drivers, bus aides, custodians, um, cafeteria staff, teachers, parents. If you have a skill set and you want to, um, have a job. If you have a skill set and you want to have a job, please consider the Marion County Public School District. We are the largest employer in this county. And if there is, if you want to work, and we can figure out a way to put you somewhere. So, so please, apply. Today is, as Ms. Thora pushed, has pushed and pushed, since we got on the board together in 18, she was an advocate for us having a morning meeting, and this was the first one. And it went very well. As you can see, there was community interest in coming to a morning meeting. And we heard a lot of comments this morning. We heard a lot, a lot, a lot of comments. And I kind of want to address just a few of them, some of the comments that we've heard this morning. We, we heard, because I don't want the folk to think that, you know, oftentimes when they're giving the public comment, we don't respond, and we don't say anything. And it's so that we can hear and, and try to get some information on it. But we heard some things about a student discipline task, task force being formed. And the question was asked about, are we considering that? I know that was a conversation that we had a few months ago. Superintendent and her team, I, I, I don't know where the status is of that, but I believe that she's taking that into consideration, and, and is working on that student, task force for student discipline. And we also heard a new one today. Thank Apostle Cave for bringing that one forth. And that was the Task Force on Safety and Security. We, we definitely want to make sure that our schools are safe, and that the environment is conducive for learning. If it's not safe, then we know that learning is not going to take place. And it has to be, and learning is not going to take place, nor teaching will be able to take place. Because it has to be both, has to be teaching and learning. And our teachers need to be, our staff need to be able to teach in a safe environment. Our kids need to be able to learn in a safe environment. And all of our other staff that support this district need to be able to do their jobs in a safe environment. So I, I know that we, we, that was something new. I hadn't heard of a, a task force, safety. I know Mr. McFadden does a wonderful job in, in, in trying to deal with the safety and security issues, but I think that was something that kind of dropped in his lap this morning, when Apostle Cave mentioned that. Also, I heard two other things, and it, it goes to, I guess, hiring practices or promotional practices. And I've, this is not a secret, I've said it before. I truly believe that you have to, you aspire to what you see. As a, as a young man, I saw different people in different lights, in different fields, and had exposure to different people. One of the people was Mr. Fordham, who was my elementary school principal. So I, I knew that an African-American male could aspire and could go to the level of being a principal in a school. And, and seeing that made some, that is, that took the challenge and went that, that route in their career. And we heard today how we're lacking in the area of African-American and Hispanic teachers, and how we're lacking in the area of African-American and Hispanic administrators. And, and the one that kind of, kind of stuck me the wrong way, kind of hit me in the side, was the, the stat that oftentimes when we do get an African-American to that AP position, we kind of stick them in discipline, and not groom them to get to the next position, or pour into them the things that they need to do to get to the next, next landing ground, the next platform. So those will be conversations that I, I'm sure that Superintendent will have with staff, and making sure that we deal with some of those, those issues as well. I'm extremely happy for the community involvement in this meeting. But even in the process of how we named, or renamed the site for Evergreen, I, I intentionally held off on looking at the results of the, the survey. And I know Ms. Beck sent it out, I think, Thursday night. I, I just didn't want to look at it, because I was kind of, just wanted to see. And nobody, this is the thing, nobody called me and told me what it was. Nobody called me, so I, I said, well, tomorrow's school board meeting, I, I guess I need to look at the results. When I looked at the results last night, I was like, oh, wow. Overwhelmingly, the community showed up and supported. I, I firmly believe and thoroughly believe that we should, when opportunity presents itself, we should include the community, we should do those type of surveys, and we should make it where it's available, that the community gives input. And we take the input from the community, and we make decisions, good decisions, on how we move in some areas, especially something like that, and some other things. The community, that's how we get buy-in. That's how we become, we remove the, the stigma of this adversary of us against them. When they feel a part of, like they're a part of the process, when the community feels they're a part of the process, and we want them to be involved in the process, then it's a win-win situation. Then our kids know that, hey, I'm, I'm just leaving one family at home and going to another family at school. And we have to set that environment. Three weeks, two weeks ago, student outcomes, student outcomes, student outcomes. That has to be our mantra going forward, student outcomes. Grades are going to be coming out very, very soon, I'm sure. We, we, we saw some of the early results of the third grade scores, reading scores. Student outcomes. Our focus has to be student outcomes. I'm not going to be stuck on a dollar amount of the item that's pulled or whatever, and all that kind of stuff. And I'm, I'm going to look at it because it's my job, it's our job as a board members, to be good stewards. But I'm looking for things that's going to help us get student outcomes. And as a board, I think that needs to be our focus. It's not about politics, it's not about who's on which side of aisle. Kids, kids are not in a, in a party. They're not in a party. They are students that need to be educated. When they get of age, they'll decide all that other stuff. I'm just more concerned about the student outcome. So as we move forward, as we move forward this year, and, and we got some things coming up, I'm just praying that our district would focus on, as a whole, from the top to the bottom, from the superintendent to the yard man, student outcomes. And all of us have a role in playing, making sure that we have right student outcomes. Everybody has a role in how we get these right student outcomes, the proper student outcomes. So with that being said, I, I, I thank you, guys, always. I, I appreciate each and every one of you, what you bring to this board. We're not the same, let me say this. We're not the same. None of us. We're five different individuals who's at, five different life experiences, and, and, and have different experiences every day. So we don't have to agree on, on individual specific details. But what we do, what we should agree on is that we're here for the students. Not, not trying to stoke anybody's interest in the public, or not trying to rally anybody around. It's about student outcomes. And if that's our focus, we'll do great things. Our district will be the district that we want it to be, as long as we keep our eyes on the ball, and the ball is student outcomes. Not about red, blue, whatever. It's about student outcomes. And that's where my focus will be. So as we move forward, I'm hoping that that will be our, our focus for the next few, from here on out. Okay? Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placements list for students through May 25th, 2022. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, sir.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students? J D 22135, J D 22146, J D 22147, J D 22148, and J D 22149 with Educational Services for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year, and the entire 2022-2023 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students? J D 22150, without Educational Services for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year, and the entire 2022-2023 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora. Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right. Post have the same signs, pass unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'm moved. Second.
Moved by Board Member King, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 1:18 p.m. Great first meeting in the morning.